All right, I almost hate to call this meeting to order, we're having so much fun. All right, so I would like to call this Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, meeting of the City Council of Charleston to order, and ask Madam Clerk if she would please call the roll.
Councilmember Greg, Councilmember Shealy, Councilmember Sacran, Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Brady, Councilmember Gregory, Councilmember Waring, Councilmember Seakins, Councilmember Shade, Councilmember Bowden, Councilmember Appel, Councilmember Parker, Mayor Teklinberg.
Now, if you would like to join us, Councilmember Mitchell will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord and Father of all mankind, forgive all of our foolish ways. We clothe us in our rightful mind and deep reverence praise. Brothers, we come here to do the work for the City of Charleston. Let us be reminded that we need to also look at the people who are undeserved. We got to remember those people, they have brought us a long, long way. Even on this Valentine's Day, you had mothers, sisters, brothers, that did a lot of things in past years, past and gone. And we cannot forget about them also, and happy Valentine's Day to the present. But let us also be mindful that there's people here that's still in need. And we cannot, cannot forget about them. And while we're sitting in these chambers and making decisions, we have to do it with mind, body, and soul. Because one day, we don't know where we would be. These blessings are in your name, amen.
Amen. All right, well, thank you all for being with us this evening. First, we have a few presentations and recognitions. First one is a recognition, it was requested by Councilmember Sacran, by the way, who is the current Chair of our Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. I'd like to ask him and our manager of that commission, Adrian Swinton, to come forward and join me. And what he's asked us to do is to recognize the members of the Special Commission on Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation, those commission members who served so diligently and so faithfully to the City of Charleston. And I'm just going to acknowledge that the way the recommendations from the commission kind of resolved themselves here in City Council, I feel like it just didn't give us the adequate opportunity to thank you. To thank you for your efforts throughout your deliberations and recommendations that were made to council. It was no easy task. So without further ado, and hopefully I've got everybody who are SVP that they would be here, would you all please join us up here on the podium? Katie McCain, Kenneth Battle, Tracy Doran, Melissa Barrett, Amy Sutherland, Najima Davis-Washington, Vanessa Halyard, Marla Robertson, and graduate students Virginia Long and Catherine Holmes, Abraham Champagne, Colleen Condon, Alvin Johnson, former Councilmember Carol Jackson, John Mitchell, and Otha Meadows. And if there's anyone else that served on the commission that didn't get their name in, that happens to be with us, please come forward as well. And yes, I wanted to ask Councilmember Gregory to join us because at that time, both he and Councilmember Sacran served as co-chairs of that initial commission. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Sacran and Ms. Swinton if they would like to make any comments. And by the way, I hope you all can stay around for just a little while after public participation. Adrian is also going to give the first report to council of the subsequent and now current Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. We'll be doing that tonight. So your work goes on, and I hope there's some solace and goodness out of that. Councilmember Sacran.
Looks long, but it's not. I just want to say good evening, I appreciate the mayor and fellow councilmembers taking the time to ignite tonight, to acknowledge the hard work of our special commission. You know, for the record, we charged this group of talented volunteers with doing something we knew would be controversial. We asked them to unapologetically review policies and practices, have difficult conversations with each other, and then assemble all those recommendations regardless of the political weight those recommendations carried. And that is exactly what you all did. I'm sure I'm going to miss a few people, and I'm not going to publicly name all the folks that are on here because the mayor has done an awesome job of doing that. But I do want to say and recognize Councilmember Gregory, first contributions, as well as our former manager of Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation, Amber Johnson. They really helped lay the groundwork for the progress in the very instrumental in creating the Permanent Commission, which we commonly refer to as the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. As many of you recall, the reaction, outcry, and hysteria over some of the recommendations was not only proof that this work is critically important for our community, but illustrated to me some of the double standard and hypocrisy that is baked in our system. We heard from some who said that these discussions and recommendations created divides in our community where there were none. We heard from others who expressed discomfort and suggested we tone down our rhetoric in order to make them feel a bit comfortable. I bring all this up this evening because we are seeing the same tactics being directed at our school boards and education leaders, and putting our teachers in the most difficult of situations. The fact of the matter is this, that teaching children about the full history of all people in Charleston and discussing the role of slavery and racism is not critical race theory and is not intended to make white kids feel guilty or black kids feel powerless. It's called history. And no offense to the critics, but learning about history should be emotional, and it should be visceral. It's literally the definition of education and learning. I want to publicly thank my fellow councilmembers who took a risk politically. Oftentimes, we forget about these things. We forget about the relationships that we have with folks. And there were folks in this council, in this chamber, that had to take a political risk. I want to thank you for that courage. That is courage, that's leadership. That's not going back to your district and listening to your constituents. That's doing what is right for not just your district, but what's right for Charleston. Fast forward today, the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission is in full swing. We meet monthly, and while the progress has been slow for some, it has been steady, strategic, and intentional. I would encourage those in the community who are so vehemently opposed to the formation of the Permanent Commission, perhaps attend one of our meetings. We would love for you to participate and join the conversation. I want to say thanks again to the volunteers who gave up their time on the special commission and the volunteers who are working on Hark right now. Thank you to Adrian Swinton for her continued leadership, as she helped shape this important work. Adrian and former current commission members, I want to let you all know that your immediate contributions may... I want to let you all know that your immediate contributions may go unnoticed. But please know this, you are helping to reshape and redefine how the city operates and how it confronts and deals with its role in the institution of slavery. These changes will outlive this council, sorry, this mayor, and certainly outlive the loud minority. Thank you for the opportunity, and it's been my pleasure to serve as co-chair on the special commission and co-chair on Hark, and I look forward to our continued work together. Thank you so much.
Dynamic job, Councilmember Sacran. I whispered to him, she should have let me go first. To the mayor, Mayor Teklinberg, council, to co-chairs, Councilman Gregory and Councilman Sacran, and the special commission. The great Maya Angelou once penned, "Just like moons and like suns, with the certainty of tides, just like hope springing high, still I rise." I say to this commission of leaders, who rose to the challenge of sitting in uncomfortable spaces, breaking down barriers of taboo that racial equity should not be one of an intellectual conversation, but stood in the gap, producing what is not ink on paper, not a report, but a contribution of time, sacrifice, scheduled alterations, and countless hours of dedication. Thank you, my fellow brothers and sisters, for rising. I commend each of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Gregory.
I would be remiss if I didn't say something here today. First of all, I want to thank everyone who took the challenge to do what we had to do in spite of knowing what the consequences of our contributions would be. We were very clear that we were not going to play games, that we were going to call it exactly like we saw it and see it today. I definitely need to thank the co-chair. He continues to be the kind of leader and beacon that this deserves. And I'm going to say something that might not be popular. It's not about black people changing, it's about white people having to change. And I'll repeat it. It's not about black people having to change. It's about white America having to change and accept the reality that we're here to stay and to continue to build this country as we've done in the past. So I want to thank all of my colleagues. While I'm not with you, I am with you. Because before we left, we made sure that we institutionalized many of our decisions and recommendations. It's in the city plan. Our city plan is one of the best that I've ever seen that has inclusion and equity all throughout it. We did what we were supposed to do. That in spite of the challenges, in spite of villainizing us, we did it, folks. Thank you very much. I love all of you, and happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, councilmembers, Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it wasn't lost on me, but Councilmember Sacran and Councilmember Gregory have stated. But I've got to tip my hat to both of those gentlemen and to the fellows standing next to Mr. Harris, Jerome Harris, who I've gotten to know over time. The birthing of this commission, as Councilmember Sacran mentioned, was very painful. And there are several people in this room who did put aside political concerns and wanted to do what was the right thing to do. And that was a result of many meetings, many conversations, but also that we all listened. And Councilmember Sacran and Councilman Gregory listened, and they came out of a spirit of compromise to create this commission. And it was hard, and it was difficult. But you look, we can see you from here, from down here, we see you guys up there. And it really is a beautiful thing to look at. And the diversity that is represented with this commission and the work that you all do is really a beautiful thing. We appreciate what you've done. I appreciate my colleagues for stepping forward at that time when they did. And go forth, and happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the co-chair of the original commission was Jerry Harris, current co-chair of the Hark. And I'm going to have you back up on the next presentation as well. Would you like to speak now or then?
You'll be back in about...
You're going to be back in about two minutes. All right. Yeah. Well, again, our heartfelt thanks to you. I hope that's conveyed and comes across. You all really did make a difference. I know it was, as I said earlier, the way it resolved with the recommendations, it seemed a little awkward. And but as Councilmember Gregory pointed out, we really have baked in recommendations into our comprehensive plan, other things that we're doing at the city, our police racial bias audit and following up on those recommendations, and also the continuing work of the Hark. So it's all been for the good. God bless you, and thank you again for being here tonight to be recognized. Thank you. All right. So... All right. Good to see you. Next, we have a resolution recognizing Black History Month. I'm going to ask Jerry Harris to come back up. I incorrectly stated a moment ago, he's co-chair of the present Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. He's president of the Charleston branch of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And if you join me, Jerry, at the podium, and I'll read this resolution. That's the next one. And then I'd like to ask you to make a few remarks. And thanks for the other members to be here as well. Thank you. So whereas from the earliest days, black communities have written crucial chapters in our national history, and whereas black Americans have contributed greatly to our nation in all areas, including science, art, music, sports, education, public service, and others, and have bravely served our country in many ways, both during times of peace and war throughout our nation's history. Whereas black Americans represent an array of distinct and vibrant cultures, each of which enriches communities in valuable ways. Whereas, according to the International African-American Museum, historians believe nearly ninety percent of African-Americans can trace their roots to Charleston, to Gadsden's War. It was enslaved Africans who built our city and their descendants today who continue to influence our city's culture through art, cuisine, among others. And whereas, the story of Black History Month begins in 1915, half a century after the Thirteenth Amendment abolished slavery in the United States. During that summer, Harvard-trained historian Carter Woodson participated in a three-week national celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of emancipation in Washington, D.C., drawing thousands of African-Americans from across the country and inspiring Woodson to form an organization promoting the scientific study of black life and history. And whereas, that September, Woodson and Minister Jesse Moreland founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and worked with black civic organizations to promote their research and findings. And whereas, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History held annual celebrations of black history, providing study materials like pictures, lessons for teachers, plays for historical performances, and posters with important dates and notable people. And they've had their national meeting, by the way, here in Charleston, South Carolina, just a couple of years ago. And whereas, in 1976, fifty years after the first celebration, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History influenced the shift from a week-long recognition to a month-long one. President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month in 1976, calling upon the public to honor the accomplishments of African-Americans in every area throughout history. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, that the City of Charleston recognizes February one through the twenty-eighth as Black History Month and encourages residents to celebrate the cultural, professional, educational, and civic contributions of African-Americans. So next, I'd like to ask Jerry Harris, who is also the president of the Charleston branch of that association, to share some remarks with us about Black History Month. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. It was a year ago, year and five days ago, this council passed the ordinance finally establishing the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. At that time, this council gave evidence to a thoughts that Frederick Douglass shared with us some years ago, which is where there is no struggle, there is no progress. This council, as a body, did struggle. In struggle, there is pain. In struggle, there is conflict. But hopefully, as Reverend Woodson, excuse me, Dr. Woodson suggested in creating the campaign, which is now known as Black History Month, that three hundred and sixty-five days a year, people will take advantage of the information that's readily available to them to understand and discover that black history is American history, and American history is black history. Three hundred and sixty-five days. It is the failure of us to have that ingrained as part of our socialization that created the conditions that led to the kind of conflict and discomfort in this body, in this room. The association is a hundred and nine years old, as America has indicated. We brought fourteen hundred people from all over the country to appreciate the tourism trade here in Charleston. We are an economic engine. History is an economic injury. I think it was Faulkner who said, "History is not dead. In fact, it's not past." And the tourism trade here in the city represents the reality of that. At the same time, the architecture of something called race, which we know is not true, has generated something called racism, which creates a lot of dysfunction. History, Woodson believed, and we believe, is an antidote to that. Standing with me are members of the association, many of whom are involved in a wide range of activities, teaching and promoting information about Charleston that might happen to have an African-American lens. Dr. Butler, the director of Avery, powerful young person, PhD, who also is an author and does some tremendous work pulling together and supporting things that are going on in the city. Avery is an example of black resistance. The theme for this year is black resistance. The existence of Avery created in the Jim Crow era is an example of that. Dana Davis, a past president of the organization, and Julie Allen Davis, who is a descendant of the crafts. If you don't know the craft story, a husband-and-wife team who miraculously escaped slavery in the eighteen forties became abolitionists, and their stories made Charleston famous. Right now, the book about, the most recent book about the crafts is about number six or seven, right, on the bestsellers list. If you haven't read that book, you should read it. Margaret Seidler. Margaret is a tireless member doing projects. She just joins the organization so she can create trouble. On your desk, you will see the historic marker card that the city has helped fund. Margaret, in fact, was a leader of that effort. Lee Bennett. Lee is a historian at Mother Emanuel. Lee is a resource any time of day. People, tourism from all over the country come to look at and see the building, but he provides the history. And it's that context, that information, that's important. I'll leave you with this story. Again, if there's no struggle, there is no progress. The purpose of education is for us to discover who we are, where we are now, so that we can change and make things better in the future. I trust that you, as members of the public and the city council, will not just give us this resolution today and say, okay, Black History Month, twenty-eight days is over. Let's move on to the next thing. Black history and American history is a three hundred and sixty-five days a year challenge to us all. If we're going to reduce nonsense and the conflict and move forward and make the city better for everyone, we need to embrace that in our hearts, not just with our mouths, right? And not just with our political rhetoric. Thank you very much.
All right, we have one more resolution tonight, and this is to honor National Mentoring Month, which in fact was last month. But that's okay, because we view mentoring as being a year-long activity in the City of Charleston and our region, right, Sam? So if I may ask, Mindy Stern, who's the director of our mayor's office of children, youth, and families, Sam Bellamy, he's the mayor's mentoring consortium co-facilitator, Stacia Bennett, Kids on Point, Cal Morrison, Charleston Youth Leadership Council, and Eric Jackson with R3 Inc. to join me at the podium. And we have a resolution for mentoring as well. So whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit qualified mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people. Whereas, the City of Charleston recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to succeed in their education, career, and well-being. And I don't know anybody that didn't have a mentor coming along the road the way I know I did. Whereas mentoring programs make our state and communities stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. Whereas, the city has created the mayor's mentoring consortium to bring together mentoring programs working in our community to strengthen and support their efforts. And whereas, throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to ensure that mentoring relationships continued virtually while also connecting families to critical resources and services. Whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve higher lifetime economic outcomes by helping them set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connecting them to opportunities and more. And whereas, research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy, absenteeism, scholastic efficiency, and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support. Whereas mentoring can be an especially effective prevention and intervention strategy for young people with marginalized identities such as youth with disabilities, young people of color, LGBTQ youth, and youth with experience in foster care. And whereas, quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people. Whereas National Mentoring Month is a time of year to celebrate... Whereas National Mentoring Month is a time of year to celebrate, elevate, encourage mentoring across our state, and recruit caring adult mentors in Charleston. Now therefore, I, John J. Teklenburg, mayor of the city, along with city council proclaim January 2023 is National Mentoring Month. But I'm going to say that the year of 2023 is, should be Mentoring Year in the city of Charleston. So just to cover that. So these fine folks behind me are involved each and every day in helping mentor the youth of our community. I'm going to ask Mindy and/or Sam to come forward if they'd like to share a few comments about what we're doing. Sam, you want to start?
Thank you. I will keep it really, really brief. I think the the resolution said it all. January is an opportunity for us to elevate and amplify the message of mentoring. We know naturally that potentially, potential is equally distributed, but opportunity isn't. So I'm proud to stand side by side with some of my fellow mentoring comrades. I thank Mindy and the mayor and the city for the support of our young people, and we thank you so much for this resolution.
I would like to just say, I really thank you, Mayor, for your leadership on this. I think that, and council as well, with your voices, we can really elevate this in the community with you all talking about it. I think that's a wonderful way to to get the word out, and I do agree, everyone has mentors along the way. I still need them, and so I just want to thank y'all and thank the mayor for his support.
So so just to let y'all know, I guess it started about two years ago, when we were still in the midst of COVID, and recognizing the kids, how important mentoring was to them. And Sam really took the lead, y'all, of connecting with all the various nonprofits and organizations, and we're still welcoming people that we find out about, to come together in a consortium. And he offers expertise and advice. They get together, we've had some mentoring fairs. We did one at the Joint Base Charleston. We did one at Boeing, where we basically have a trade show of all the different mentoring groups in Charleston region and solicit volunteers from those organizations. And we've had, we've had hundreds of volunteers come forward through these efforts to support these fine organizations. So thank you, Sam, and the rest of you for the work you've been doing and helping the youth of this community. We really appreciate it. All right. Next, we have approval of city council minutes from January 10. We have any corrections or deletions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. So next up already is our citizens' participation period. We welcome everyone that's come here to share remarks with us, and Madam Clerk will help lead the order on that. How many folks do we have?
We have five people signed up to speak. Did you want us at a time limit? All right, the time is two minutes. Mohammed Drees.
Please state your name and address.
Council. Racism is dead and buried. It was killed, executed in 1976 by Imam Wariq Muhammad, the son of Elijah Muhammad. I come before you this evening, and I'm asking, will you all to help me to gain three billion dollars to solve the ethical problem in our community? I had a great experience yesterday with five European young ladies. They made me thought I was in heaven. They did a wonderful job at the hospital that I visit, not visit, but I would take in there as an emergency. So I thought I would come here tonight and tell y'all henceforth, y'all gonna see Mohammed Drees like y'all have never seen him before. And I'm gonna come here, five people, council seat number four, number six, number seven, number eight, and number nine. The whole world gonna know about y'all, because I want y'all to help us, like we have helped y'all to be in our seat and get all the money y'all have gotten for you group, the people who y'all work for, who selected y'all. So we're gonna be coming at you. You will see yourself on every media that is possible, and we're gonna get this three billion dollars to do the work we have, want to do, and need to do in Charleston, South Carolina. Thank you.
Former Councilwoman Jackson.
Hi, good evening. It's Carol Jackson, 1461 Patterson Avenue. As long as I'm here to celebrate the progress of the special commission and hark, I thought I would just take a minute to come to to thank and commend the mayor and Councilwoman Parker for pursuing what I'm considering to be a very wonderful case study for how we are serving a community that has been overlooked, underserved, and 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 not respected in the ways of the typical services that we provide for citizens. So I'm speaking in particular about the neighborhood that's on the very south end of James Island. They call themselves Artillery Point Neighborhood Association, and Councilmember Parker and the mayor have been working for the last eighteen months since we figured out that there were over, I'd say thirty-five properties. We're still making the list as accurate as we can. We know that there were about fifty properties that were annexed into the city in 1997, and one of the top reasons for annexation was that they would have the opportunity to connect to the Charleston water sewer system. Twenty-five years later, that had not happened. And there's a lot of real reasons why it took so long, but there's also a lot of reasons that we know we want to improve as as we're working together as a more wholesome, holistic society. So we're on the way. The project is underway. The funding is ninety percent here, and we'll look forward to coming back and give the council a report on on how things are going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, too.
Anthony Bryant.
Anthony G. Bryant. Twenty-one twenty-three Cortland Avenue, Charleston, 29403 since 1968. Thirty-two thousand people in the peninsula, we're still downtown. Jazz, Ken Burge did a documentary on jazz music, and Duke Ellington said this, he said, "It was a happy day when the first unhappy slaves landed on these shores." And so it's some unhappy news we got to talk about tonight. I believe in separation of church and state. For what reason do I believe in that? Slavery and Jim Crow. Politicians enforced and administered injustice on Black folk during that period of time. So anytime it's presented to me about religion in America, I wonder who you talking about? Who you talking to? Not me. So Homeland Security has a partnership with faith-based organizations. I did a public comment on a national level to that effect. And then the fact that Homeland Security is the twenty-two federal agencies, the FBI, DEA, all these groups of them, this put on our community since the 1960 Crime Bill, 1970 Crime Bill, 1980 Crime Bill, 1990 Crime Bill, every progress we made as Black folk was a Crime Bill behind it. And so therefore, what happened in Memphis, Tennessee is a reflection of that. Black-on-black crime is self-hatred toward each other. And so we can't control that, what the white man did to us, two things, made us hate ourselves, we got fear him. And so that's the problem. Those that are afraid to be Black, those that are afraid to speak up for Black folk, those that promulgate what happened in Memphis, Tennessee, they're the problem, too. Black lives go better than some Black folk for a couple hundred years. So I'll leave you this on your desk to take a look at about Black people on the other side. You know, as Dr. King said in his poem, with Lowell said, you know, "Truth is wherever on the scaffold, wrong's wherever on the throne."
Thank you, sir.
All right, those were all the speakers that we had. He is not online, no, sir.
Okay, just checking.
We did receive some comments. All of the comments received online and by telephone were sent to the councilmembers in full. This is a summary of comments provided by those that have not already spoken at the meeting tonight. One comment online asked council to proceed with the pedicab bid and said that bureaucratic red tape stifled innovation and investment in the city. One comment online urged council to stop the flying of the Confederate flag at the battery every weekend as it was offensive to residents and tourists, and those that flew it there carried guns and acted aggressively. One comment online asked the city to take an active interest in holding permit holders accountable. They said not having control over a city sanctioned event was dangerous and unprofessional. We received two comments by phone opposed to permits being issued to flags across the South. We received one comment by phone opposed to permits being issued to flags across the South. They also stated that ninety-seven percent of all of the disorderly conduct citations issued in the city were issued to African American youth. They also asked council or the clerk to announce at council meetings that citizens can and should participate in city government by calling the hotline, which is 843-579-6313. Tony Daniel submitted a comment regarding council not opening an illegally closed road, and those are all the comments we received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Did anyone else want to be heard that didn't sign up for any reason? Well, thank you all for being with us. Appreciate your comments, being with us, and listening in, and Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilmember.
If I might, if I might, please. I would like to move pursuant to our rules, and as a matter of personal indulgence, I have a family matter that I need to attend to.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see if we can move and take K1 out of order, which is the report of the Traffic and Transportation Committee. I wouldn't otherwise do that, but I think the council may have a couple of questions from that report.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to give it before I have to leave, and I'm going to have to leave very briefly.
Yeah.
So I'd like to move.
Pleasure, council. Without without any opposition, we'll move forward to K1 and come back to our petitions and communications. So I'll call on Councilmember Seekings, chairman of the Committee on Traffic and Transportation.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilmembers for indulging me and allowing me to take this out of order. I know there's a number of people who want to be heard, and we'll make this as brief as we can. The Committee on Traffic and Transportation met last Tuesday, February 7th, at two at four o'clock. We had a number of items that we took up that I'm going to run through quickly, and I suspect there may be a few questions from each one of you or some of you around this table. We got an update, by the way, on our bike share program. As you know, we're now into a second generation of the bike share program, now being administered by Lime. Lime is an international company that has really tailored their program quite nicely to Charleston. The report is good and getting better. It's getting a lot of usage. They're getting better at positioning the bikes and making sure that the rules of the road are followed, particularly on the peninsula currently, that being going the right way down one-way streets, staying off sidewalks. And because of the fact that they're not just a transportation company, but they're a tech company, we're going to work on some geofencing to help along the the routing system. So go along well. A couple of things, there was a request and some conversation about expanding the program into West Ashley and to James Island. West Ashley is a natural with the Greenway sitting there, with the West Ashley Bike Pedestrian Bridge coming right at us sooner rather than later. I think there's a lot of sentiment internally, and there's ability on Lime's part to do that, so they're going to look into it. Councilmember Parker asked about James Island, too, and we'll make sure that they put that into the consideration umbrella, and we will move forward. But they're a dynamic company, they're doing great. So so far, so good. We then took up a discussion, just a discussion about our pedicab program in the city. As you may recall, we amended our pedicab ordinance about eight months ago, maybe nine months ago now, to give us the ability to expand that program from the current fifteen daytime decals and thirty nighttime decals, to expand it by six, both day and night. We went through a process that was actually a RFQ process that was failed. We did not put it back out. So we put it on the table and brought it back up after six months at the request of one of our members of the committee. We had a discussion about it, and I believe that it's best said that the upside of that discussion is there's various opinions about what we should do, but we should do something. And so we're going to put it on our agenda next time to vote whether or not to move forward with adding six decals to not, against the backdrop of a number of things having happened, not just in the city of Charleston, but particularly on the peninsula, since we passed that ordinance. We're coming down the pike with the peninsula plan. We've already hired our consultants. We've reconfigured King Street. We're still going through that process, which has made access to King Street a little more difficult for a number of people, not just the pedicab team. The DOT Road Safety Audit is going to come up for discussion next month as well. So put all that into the mixer. I think that we will bring it back up. I know that we're going to bring it back up. We're going to vote on whether to put it back out again for RFP or keep it status quo ante based on a debate and vote, and we'll bring it forward to you next month. We got an update from, well, we we did not get an update on the city-state-street dichotomy on particularly in the peninsula, but across the the city. And I have in my hands, and I'll make sure it gets distributed to all of you, a map that shows in any any part of the city where we own streets as opposed to the DOT. I've got one right here, and you can see this is the peninsula. It is a crazy checkerboard out there for purposes of us moving forward with certain initiatives, particularly the initiative that Councilmember Sacran has been pushing in his district. We need to get a hold of what we own, what we don't own, and how many people we need to get involved. And so we are going to work through that. Mr. Somerville, Mr. Fountain, and Mr. O'Brien and I had a conference call a couple weeks ago on trying to get together a package on not only what we own, we know what we own, but what it really costs us and what the the consequences are of us taking back certain roads so we can expand our authority and influence in those areas. I think that's a fair way of stating it, Mr. Mayor. Anyway.
We deferred that item.
We did defer that item, so, all right. But I just want to make sure Councilmember Sacran in particular knows that we haven't forgotten about it, and really, the impetus for that conversation was the activism by your constituents and you on that particular issue. So again, more to come on that. We took up valet parking at eighty at Broad Street, which is right outside of city council chambers, just to the west of Meeting Street, in front of the soon-to-be-open tomorrow-night Sorrel Restaurant. They've requested a valet spot. We approved it conditionally pending agreement by other neighbors along there to allow them to use four spots after 6:00 PM for valet. We're also going to take up the valet program and rethink it, both in terms of specifically identified valet spots for certain businesses and then community valet spots in highly dense areas like Upper King Street. Again, more to come on that. To Councilmember Greg's great delight, we took up the Fairchild at Riverland Intersection Improvement Project and passed it unanimously. I don't know if he wants to comment on that, but some good things coming to Daniel Island. And then finally, we took up an ordinance to amend Chapter 21 of the City of Charleston Code and passed that unanimously. So unless there's any questions, what I meant, oh, we deferred it. I'm sorry, we deferred it. I apologize. And that was at Councilmember Shade's request. That's the truck parking ordinance. It came before us. We want to make sure Councilmember Shade gets his input onto it and maybe look at a couple of the exceptions that were built in there. So we deferred it till the next meeting to give Councilmember Shade a chance to appear and for us to maybe think about the language. So I apologize about that. That is where we are. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and that is for now, anyway, my report.
Councilmember Gregory, then Shade, then Parker.
Yeah, that that was going to be my question, whether or not we were going to address the squatter truck syndrome that we have west Ashley. So you are going to try to make those changes within this provision.
So with, just so you know, our legal department did exactly as asked. They did present to us a proposed ordinance. We just wanted to make sure Councilmember Shade had a busy day last Tuesday. We want to make sure he gets before the committee to pitch it, and then we'll we'll take it up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to delay your departure. I just want to make sure I heard. As to the city-state-street maintenance and what we own, what we don't, that's including streets in West Ashley as well.
The entire city of Charleston, all somewhere, if you ask Dale Morris, 157 miles, you ask me, 200 miles, all of it, every road on in the city, we've got a map, we know who owns what.
And I can just report to council that the discussion we're having about the squatter trucks has gotten attention of a lot of folks, and it's improving even by us just having this discussion. So we're making some headway on it, but we got to get this ordinance right and get this ordinance passed. Thank you all for your your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Parker.
Thank you for answering that. James Island, we're, we're excited for that package, the street package.
Right. We, we've got it. We'll make sure. Let's get it out, Robbie, to everybody just so they can see it. It's, it's fascinating when you look and see. By the way, the further you get off the peninsula, more roads we actually own.
Yeah.
So because of the recent development.
Daily, daily struggle there, but another, just one last thing. Sorry to keep you. I do just want to say that the Calhoun Street repairs, I have heard from more and more people in the past week or two. The repairs in front of Roper, you know, I don't know who did it. I don't know who's taking credit for it, but that is something long overdue, and people are grateful. Let's keep it going. Calhoun right in front of Roper.
Yes.
As soon as you give kudos, people will come out of the woodwork to take credit for it.
Hey, just keep it coming. I mean, just keep it coming.
Give it to Mr. Somerville.
So, so Mayor Riley advised me to take credit for something, whether you did it or not, because they're going to blame you for everything. So Councilmember Parker, you're, you, you get the credit.
Great. I told everyone.
You brought it up first. Councilmember Shealy.
Yeah. Are those maps available on, are they accessible online, or can they be accessible online for all of us to see?
The answer is yes. It's hard to dig them out. We'll make them accessible through Robbie's site, and we'll send everybody a copy tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And again, they're fascinating, but good to take a look at them.
Councilmember Appel.
And since I can't help myself, when we get a clear picture of all the roads that the city owns, we're going to need to have some funding to do some things with them. So if you haven't already put this on your calendar, please tune in to the next meeting of the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. We're going to be discussing potential new fees under some recent state legislation. Among, among other things, a road maintenance fee, which the Supreme Court has upheld, or rather, the Supreme Court originally struck down and the legislature indicated that they would be allowed moving forward. And so this is an opportunity for the city to have a dedicated revenue stream to help actually do some of the road improvement measures that Councilman Sacran talked about, and I think we can all talk about in our respective districts. So the funding piece is an important piece of the puzzle, and we're going to be making some progress on that hopefully at our next Budget Ad Hoc Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gregory, back to you.
Yeah, um, so you will have a cost-benefit analysis with regard to the roads and the streets.
So.
Just, just to piggyback on, on Councilmember.
The answer to that is no, but it doesn't mean we don't care, because we do. What we're trying to cobble together is what the actual carry cost is for the roads that we do own. That's the objective. It's going to take some time to do, but we will keep working towards getting that metric for you.
So are we also trying to acquire, be responsible for roads that normally wouldn't be the state owned?
Well, well, let me just give you an example of kind of how this came to pass and where we are. We have traditionally in the city owned roads two ways. By expansion and development through roads that are built in suburbs or by necessity, and I'll give you two examples. One, the corner of Bennett and Rutledge, which is in my district, where we wanted to put a stop sign. Rutledge there was a DOT road, and they did, it didn't meet their criteria basically because we didn't have a long and deep enough accident report. Not enough bad stuff that happened. So instead of fighting with them, we took back that road, that block. Example one. Second, bigger example is Murray Boulevard and the low battery seawall. In order to build the low battery seawall and rebuild the road and all the utilities below it, we would have had to meet DOT standards and specs and codes if we kept the ownership with the DOT rather than taking ownership back. And one of the things that the DOT doesn't allow is utilities underneath the road. Well, that would be impossible for us for drainage and for sewer and all the hookups along there, so we took Murray Boulevard back. What we're trying to get a handle on is what it actually costs us to own a particular road, like Cannon Street. We own the block of Cannon Street in front of the fire station. The next block over between Saint Philip and Coming Street, we don't own it. So the practicalities of it in terms of future projects and the cost of carry. So when someone comes back and says, let's take a road back, we can actually have a conversation, not just about how we're going to manage that road, but what it's going to cost us to carry it over the course of, fill in the blank here. So, and, and we just aren't there yet.
I, I guess my answer is somewhere within all that, but we.
Well, the answer is no. I mean, we're not going to do a cost-benefit analysis until we know the cost.
Okay. But the state DOT does have estimates on how much it costs to maintain a road.
Right.
That's all I'm talking about.
We have their general numbers, and I know this item was deferred, but I can't resist now. I'm going to share one fact.
I wasn't quite finished, Mayor.
With you all, and because I asked G I S when this matter came up to do a, a fresh review of how many streets in the city are city streets versus DOT. Because when I came into office and asked a question, the, the ballpark number that was given to me in the city of Charleston, about eighty percent of the streets were DOT and about twenty percent were city streets. Well, what has happened over time is we've accepted more streets as Councilmember Seekings described, but also over time, we've accepted a lot of neighborhood streets. All these new neighborhood streets, all these new neighborhoods, Johns Island, Daniel Island, new neighborhoods, particularly in the suburbs, all those streets are city streets. We accepted them when they were built to our specification, so we have to maintain them long-term. So anyway, they, they did a ballpark, and rather than twenty percent of the streets in our city being city streets, it's more like forty-five percent. So in, I think in relatively short order, you'd be able to say about half of the streets within our city are city streets, and we have a responsibility to maintain them. And we have absolutely no source of income dedicated to street and highway and crosswalks and sidewalk maintenance. And so it's something that this council definitely will have to address.
Right.
And I suggest that we do it this year.
Mayor. Yes, yes, sir. So I can complete what I was saying. I mean, a bit of good news. You know, I think thanks to Councilman Sacran, we now have a crossing guard at the corner of Grove and King. I don't know whether or not the other intersections also have them, but we do have a crossing guard at the corner of Grove and King, and I want to thank Councilman Sacran for his efforts in that area.
Right. Any more questions or comments to the T N T report? Councilmember Shade.
I just want to build on this one point that we all have been discussing. It is critically important that we get control of some of these roads in our city. And I'll just use Orange Grove Road as an example, which was a major artery in my district. It is a, is state road. We cannot get the traffic speed limit reduced because it doesn't meet, as you pointed out, Councilmember Seekings, the criteria, even though that road is totally surrounded by residential community. So I applaud what you are doing, and we've got a lot of work to do to, to further that. Thank you for your, your report.
Right. Councilmember Greg.
I can't listen. I'm sorry. Just so we're all aware, I don't, I don't know if you know this, but it costs about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repave one mile of a road in good condition. So as we think about taking ownership of some of these roads, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars using current DOT funding cycles. The, the South Carolina DOT is on a one-hundred-year repaving cycle. So think about that as you go back to your districts, and we might expect DOT to repave our, our roads once every hundred years. I don't think that's going to cut it, so.
They told me ninety-nine.
Yeah, ninety-nine. I'm sorry. I rounded up.
So just very briefly to Councilmember Greg's point, he's right. It's very expensive to pave. We own a lot of roads that we don't pave. We don't do paving, and, and the county and the, and the DOT still does paving through some obligations that they've got. And that's one of the things that we want to get a real handle on. Just because we've taken ownership of some of these roads, we're not paving them. I mean, others are. With our money, by the way, I mean, there's a half cent sales taxes collected. It's our money that we spend in there. So again, that's, this is the very nascent stages of a process to really get a handle on what we own, what it costs us, and what the long-term prospects are if we start taking things back so we can do things like build low battery, put a stop sign up, lower speed limits, and all the common sense things we'd like to do that we don't get to do because we are under a separate set of rules.
Right.
So I just want to make sure, Mr. Somerville, did I miss anything?
Well, the committee report did include a definitive matter for Daniel Island, so we do need to vote.
I need a motion.
Committee report. Is any other, any other questions, comments? All in paper, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers Seekings. We hope all is well.
Thank you.
So now back to our section on petitions, petitions and communications. We have three items up. First is a report, as mentioned earlier, from Adrian Swinton, who's our manager of the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. Adrian, would you come forward as she's coming forward? And just a last tidbit, Councilmember Greg, thank you for your advocacy to get that agreement done to improve the intersection over on Daniel Island. I saw the next day there was a letter to the editor, so you might call that individual and let them know you got that done. Take credit for that. Adrian Swinton.
Thank you, everyone, again for your attention, and we have a progress report. As stated earlier, we wanted to stay in compliance, so we're here to give a progress report on where the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission, known as H A R C, is at the current moment. So just a little background, council may already know, but for those who are listening in and those who are here, on June ninth, twenty twenty, the mayor and city council voted to create the Special Commissions for Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation. This commission was charged with dismantling systematic racism when it comes to a policy level. The commissions, the commission consists of six council members and over forty volunteers. They were divided up into seven subcommittees, and those were Criminal Justice Reform, Economic Empowerment, Health Disparities and Environmental Justice, History and Culture, Housing and Mobility, Internal Review, and Youth and Education. That report totaled over a hundred recommendations. The special commissions who was recognized here today, there were several others who weren't here, but we want to acknowledge the leadership. City council members were those six, and the co-chairs for the whole commission was Councilmember William Gregory, along with Councilmember Jason Sacran. We have former council member Carol Jackson, Marie Del Chapo, and Councilman Ross Appel and Councilman Keith Waring. Community members were also there, but we had leads for each of the seven subcommittees. So Housing and Mobility was Tracy Duran. Economic Empowerment was Alvin T. Johnson, Jr. Health Disparities and Environmental Justice was Dr. Kimberly B. Willis. Criminal Justice Reform was Jerome Jerry Harris. And taking the lead for Youth and Education was Crystal Robertson Rouse. History and Culture was Dr. Dr. Knight, Felice Knight. And Internal Review was Darren Lee Calhoun II. We also thank you for the leadership. That transitioned into the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission H A R C. So in February ninth, twenty twenty-two, Charleston City Council established H A R C as a permanent commission. This is our current members. Our co-chairs are Councilman Jason Sacran, along with Mr. Jerry Harris, Councilman Stephen Bowden, Councilman Michael Seekings, Bonnie Cleveland, Carol Fry, Alvin T. Johnson, former councilwoman Carol Jackson, Robert Bob Simmons, Kim Long, and recently appointed Reverend Dr. Adam Shoemaker. This compiles the H A R C council, and we have a very diverse group. We had several focal areas, so the way we approached this, as Councilman Gregory stated, we saw the city plan. The city plan has an element of equity and resilience component to it. And so we reviewed the special commissions for intersectionality for the city plan. And we prioritized three areas. It was economic empowerment, housing and mobility, and criminal justice reform. We looked for the intersections, and then we created the work groups. Work groups met, did recommendations via the progress report that was distributed to council. The recommendations, we asked that you are going to review the recommendations, and it is very important and vital that we get those recommendations to standing committees. It is only when we operationalize, when we're able to implement those recommendations. We are making progress, and we want that progress to be known, and we don't want it to become stale. That's why it must go to standing committees. I'll show you an example of that. For example, transportation. The city plan states work to improve access to comfort of the Carter stations in the city of Charleston through connections with neighborhoods and expanding the street furniture and other annemities provided at stops. That's what the city plan said. So the special commission's recommendation that aligned right with the city plan, just in different wording stated, collect and analyze more area-specific data to pinpoint the locations and neighborhoods which would benefit from increased streetscaping, lighting, and right ways in order to properly access mobility needs across the city. The progress that we've made with this is H A R C had a presentation done by Morgan Grimes, and Morgan is the community outreach coordinator for V C D C O G. And she does it for also the neighboring jurisdictions. So she was able to incorporate and collaborate with H A R C, and we will also be a part of those conversations moving forward. And we are working with them in neighboring jurisdictions to advance existing plans to provide water taxi, high-speed ferry systems as a public transit, transit option. So we have a path forward. We will review the final recommendations. We have four left, but we decided that we're going to work on two this time. So those two that we're highlighting are history and culture, and we're going to go inside the city of Charleston and look at internal review. We're also going to look at, you know, health disparities and environmental justice and youth education. They won't be left behind, but we're going to focus on those two for the current time. These are the goals we have. Our next review will be July twenty twenty-three. The recommendations from the three be passed through council. City progress report for cultural and history and internal review be disseminated to city council for discussion. We want to increase the engagement and the retention for the racial equity core group. The racial equity core group is essential for the city because it represents each department of the city. We are working towards breaking down silos and creating partnerships and collaboration. So that is very important to understand what department has what culture and what they're working on, because we don't want to speak on some work that we're not sure of, and we want to see if we have an opportunity for collaboration. And also develop a dashboard. We've been working on our website, and that is updated, but we need a way of tracking how these systems are working and what would benefit us when it comes to racial justice and racial equity. So a couple of my updates, many of you may not have known me before here, but I'm, I worked at M U S C, and I worked in the Office of Equity. So what is important to me is collaboration when it comes to internal and external. I have done this with many partnerships. So internally, I work with the Office of Innovation, Housing and Community Development, Minority Business Enterprise Office, the Mayor Office for Children, Youth, and Children, C P D, and I also have standing meetings with the procedural justice director, Gillian Edison, who also did a presentation about traffic stops at our last H A R C meeting. Human resources when it comes to onboarding and creating the D E I video so that everyone can see that that is a pillar here with the city of Charleston. Planning and perseverance, preservation, and sustainability also take a lead in the racial equity core group. Externally, I have worked with those leadership over in Charleston County, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the Low Country Black Cultural Network. I'm on the advisory committee there. The Sophia Institute doing racial healing circles. Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the steering committee as we will have our first D E I festival happening in twenty twenty-three this year. And I also think it is fundamental to meet with those community leaders. Doing presentations, I was privileged to have done a presentation with the Housing and Community Development during their orientation for sub recipients. The Commission on Women, Minority Women Business Enterprise Board Retreat, Center for Creation, Creative Retirement, that is associated with the College of Charleston, and the Association for Study of African American Life and History. Awesome. Thank you for your time. Do I have any questions?
Any questions, Brad? So, oh, Councilmember Sac.
No, no questions. I just want to say thank you, Adrian, for, for the update. It's been tremendously helpful to see the progress, not just because I'm chair, but I feel like fellow council members probably want to know what's been going on. So I do want to say thank you for that, and, and one thing. So I do want to say thank you for that. And one thing I just want to emphasize that was embedded in this is for the chairs of our committees, particularly Public Safety, Community Development, Traffic and Transportation. Some of the recommendations that are embedded in the special commission report that HRC is pouring through, those recommendations will be coming to to your standing committees. So please be prepared for dialogue discussion. This effort is not going to come to fruition unless we take what we're talking about in theory on paper and bring it to actual action and legislative change. So I just want to let you all know that those will be coming and we encourage you to have healthy debate, but they're coming your way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
We are so glad to have you as part of the city of Charleston team. We hate it for MUSC that you had that you left them, but we're so glad to have you here and you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
So next up, we have a report on our climate action plan and other matters of the resiliency and sustainability advisory committee by Katie McCain. Katie?
Good evening, everyone. This is on. Okay. I don't know. Can you hear me?
Testing.
There we go. Thank you very much, Mayor Tecklenburg. Good evening. I just have a brief report from our latest resiliency and sustainability advisory committee meeting, which was on February second. We had eleven of thirteen members present. The first item on the agenda, Dale Morris gave a lot of updates on some resilience projects. He keeps you very well informed on those. I know you have some workshops on them, so I won't go into great detail on them. Next on the agenda, I presented a progress report on the implementation of our climate action plan. The progress report is available on our website and it's been emailed to all city staff. I believe you've all received a copy. I'd encourage you to check it out if you haven't already and let me know if you have any questions or any suggestions. That is only one and a half years into the whole five-year climate action plan, so we're still pretty early in the process. And then finally, on the agenda, we talked about, we continued the discussions on electric vehicle infrastructure policy for new construction because we know that it is really costly and cumbersome to go back and retrofit buildings so they have the electrical panel capacity and conduit and wiring to add the charging stations in the future. And we're facing that right now in our city garages. So the committee at this point reviewed a draft policy for this and we will, we look forward to continuing discussions with the development community and welcome anyone who's interested in providing input to improve that ordinance to contact us. And that's all.
Any questions for Katie? Councilmember Parker?
Not as much as a question, just thank you, Katie. I mean, you are, I can come to, I can call you, email me with a thread of an idea and you can take it and move it all forward and you've done that for me multiple times and I appreciate it. James Island appreciates all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Katie. Keep up the good work as well.
Thank you.
Right. Oh, councilmember Waring has something.
Before Katie leave the microphone, we had a meeting about a couple of weeks ago. Part of her process when some of these lots that the city acquires because continuously flooding, some of the alternative uses when we turn them into victory gardens or
rain gardens.
Rain gardens and the like. A portion of the budget that we pass cut her out. It's a small amount. So when we do mid-year budget adjustments, it may be as much as $10,000. I'm looking over at our CFO. He has a way of pulling rabbits out of a hat. Instead of waiting until the following fiscal year, I think there may be a way to help with funding this year on some of those alternative uses to help get kids, families involved when we come out with these rain garden ideas, maybe having hot dogs, balloons to get the community to join it. That's the type of thing we're talking about doing. So thank you, Katie, for all that you did.
I think in the meantime, she's trying to solicitate some grants or donations to try to keep that program alive this year despite what we do mid-budget, right?
Yes, if anyone is interested in donating up to $10,000 to support the Charleston Rainproof Program, just contact me. Thank you all.
Councilmember Shade.
You know, based on what Councilman Waring just brought up, why aren't we having Katie report to the Public Works Utilities Committee more frequently? Yeah, I mean, just what you just said, Councilman Waring, it's important. Totally overlooked it and I think on things that you have brought to our attention, that fits right into what we're doing with stormwater and public utilities and works and this gets you in front of our committee from time to time.
Sounds great. Sign me up.
Remember that every drop of water that Katie retains in a garden is a drop of water that doesn't have to go through your drainage pipe.
You should see the smile on our CFO's face over there.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it. Good work. Okay, lastly, Amy Wharton is going to make a report on our Citizen Services desk. Seven two four, seven three one one, just in case you needed that number.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, this will be brief. Just a quick outline of our Citizen Services. Citizen Services is a non-emergency hotline for city services and information. We formed it in mid-year 2018. It has five staff members and it's an easy way for our citizens to report a problem, request a service, a complaint, any city function that they have in one unified place, single point of contact. Any questions? Sorry, there are three. I really do. I really, really do. Three ways that citizens can contact Citizen Services, it's online and that's the the address, by phone, which the mayor just said the number, and then by email as well. Technology. So Cisco is a call center module that with workflows, that's what everybody calls into. GovQA is a customer request management system and that's used to track all of the requests received through the call center. GIS, online maps, interactive web applications, which I'm sure all of you use our GIS often as well. City app, mobile app, which allows customers to submit requests and then we have City Bot as well, which is another app that our customers can utilize. In twenty twenty-two, Citizen Services handled seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen calls. That's an average of six, about six thousand calls per month. Average talk time of one minute and twenty-four seconds and average hold time was twenty seconds. Eighty-eight percent of those calls were handled by our staff immediately. They're easy questions, questions that are easily answered, not necessarily easy questions. I said that wrong, sorry. And then some of it's just forwarding it on to other jurisdictions, et cetera. Request type of frequency, sixteen thousand, three hundred and two servers requests were entered into GovQA. And all of those are assigned to a department for some type of response. Eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen of those requests came from the phone calls that we tried, the seventy-two, seventeen thousand phone calls that I talked about in the previous slide. Eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one were generated through the online portal and then the remaining come from various sources, direct reports by city staff, customer comment cards, emails, city app, et cetera. The top ten requests were, I'll just, I'll just read out the top three, which are garbage can requests and complaints, garbage not collected and broken malfunctioning parking meters, and then trash not collected. Those were the highest volume of calls. And then you can see the rest of them that were minimal. So our service level agreement is to respond to requests within one business day. This does not mean that the, that it's completed. It just means that somebody has to respond to it within one day. Our SLA was seventy-two percent, so that means seventy percent were responded to within one day. And we're currently looking at our SLA and how to better track it, developing realistic timelines for when things should be completed and actually tracking the completion time. So that is something that we're working on and not just the response times. And that's really all it had. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Amy on this? Councilmember Gregory?
I mean, we use it. We use this system. Can you still track status? The status, right?
All of the, that's the GovQA module so we can look at and see where something is.
Yeah.
And if somebody calls back, then we can look to see if it's already been entered. We don't enter it again. We just follow up.
It works for us. Very well.
Councilmember Sac. Just, just very quickly, thank you, Amy. Number one, it's amazing that it wasn't until twenty eighteen we did this. So thank you, Mayor and the rest of the team. It's been helpful for our council member, especially the new council members. A lot of the questions I get can really be directed to this service. And then the last piece, I'm glad to see in the top rated questions, the number one question wasn't, who is my council member?
They do handle calls like that as well.
It could have been, but see, that would have been an immediate thing that was answered and not necessarily.
But I find it amazing, y'all, that six, over sixteen thousand actual work orders, you know, have in a year's time get put in for everything from repairing a sidewalk to a pothole to picking up the trash or repairing a, or replacing a cart, a trash cart. And how we manage with, before we have these wonderful folks answering these calls and they do it so politely. By the way, they're, they're kind of supervised immediately by Brian Shaheen, who's our city ombudsman. And, and then during emergencies, like when we have a hurricane coming through town and we're taking emergency calls, they're actually open twenty-four, seven, taking calls, you know, in our emergency response. So, so, so these employees even do more than just this eight-hour day whenever the need arises. We, we have that call center unit that we can use for other purposes as well. They're very responsive and I think all of y'all use them. Sometimes it's easier just to tell our citizens, oh, you got a little something you need to report, just go ahead and call eight four three, seven two four, seven three one one. And that way it gets entered into the system and gets tracked. But I just thought at least on an annual basis that we should share these numbers with y'all and let you know how many calls we're seeing and particularly about the categories as well. Any, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it very much. So we had our TNT committee already, so we can go next to our Committee on Public Safety. Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee on Public Safety met yesterday afternoon at two o'clock. The first order of business was the approval of an amended ordinance dealing with noise from sound trucks. This ordinance dealt with the amplification component. That ordinance was, that recommendation was passed unanimously by our committee. As you may know, if you were hanging around Broad Street anytime, there seems to be a particular driver who travels up and down Broad Street at certain hours of the day with his amplified complaint about government of some sort. So I think that will help address some of the noise issues that have been complaining about from that. The second, we, I'll skip the racial bias audit in a second, but the other consideration we need to vote on was approval to submit an application for the fiscal year twenty-three for a school resource officers. That dealt with approving a resource officers for, I think, three schools. Chief is on the line. That was Miminger School of the Arts and one other school that's just left by attention, but this was a grant to fund those officers, SROs, at those three schools. The chief's on the line. He can add more comment to that than I have. Then we'll go to the racial bias audit report. I think we got Captain Cetera available. Let me just remind you very briefly that we passed this racial bias audit in two thousand and nineteen. The results of the audit had seventy-two total recommendations, forty-eight findings, which were then broken down into five sections. As of today, over ninety-eight percent of those recommendations have been achieved to compliance and thirty-seven are at full compliance, but I'll let, is Captain Cetera available online, chief? And he can add to that report.
Yep.
Chief, you want to lead us off on that?
Sure. Actually, Tony's going to lead us off and I'll kind of add my comments after him. Thank you, sir. Can you hear me? Yep. Very good. So just for everyone's awareness, while we started the racial bias audit, we asked them to focus on five different areas. And the first area was traffic stops to include our field contact cards. The second area was use of force to include deadly and non-deadly interactions. The third was the complaint process that also involved our internal and external complaints. The fourth one was community oriented policing practices. In the last section, which was our fifth, was a focus on recruitment, hiring, promotions and personnel practices. So as Councilman Shade said, that over the past three years, we've achieved a compliance status of roughly ninety-eight point five percent. And when we talk about compliance, I'm going to give you some examples just so we're all on the same page. So to start off, there's thirty-seven recommendations that have reached a status of full compliance with an annual review. And this means that we've satisfied the recommendation. However, it's so important that we go back and review it. And this could apply to policy and procedures and some examples might be the constitutional issues and motor vehicle stops policy, our response resistance policy, or even the Office of Internal Affairs policy. Part of these recommendations also looked at to develop a strategic plan for recruitment and hiring, develop a comprehensive annual training plan and to also incorporate de-escalation into training-based scenario training. And once again, these are just some examples of our recommendations that have achieved a full compliance with an annual review status. And then next we have thirty-three recommendations that reach the status of full compliance. And by that, we mean that we've achieved the status and there's nothing else that we can do with the recommendation. An example of that would be, one of the recommendations was to add a sanctity of life statement with an applicable policies. So we did that. We had added sanctity of life to two policies, our response resistance policy and also our lethal and less lethal weapons policy. So we satisfied that recommendation, but once again, there is nothing else for us to do with it. Another example would be to develop a disciplinary matrix, which is internally to discipline our officers should we need to go there. So once again, we developed it and there's nothing for us to do with that. So that's why those recommendations were labeled as full compliance. And the last is, the last recommendation is for the third-party review process. And we are happy to say that after all this work over the last two and a half years, that we are finally at a point to announce that we have identified a state university that we've been in communication with. We are in negotiations with a contract and we are hoping to present a formal contract to city council by the next meeting and get that signed off on so we could progress with the third-party review. And those are the way that we classified all the recommendations. And just some further nuggets out there to talk about the importance of the audit is over the course of the last year and a half, we've done roughly three press releases and more interviews just to communicate with the public where we are with the audit. There was conversations about creating a final report or a mid-year report. We basically said that when we create these reports, they either end up sitting on someone's desks or they end up in an email and it's really not applicable or usable. So we created the dashboard with the help of our GIS unit. They did a phenomenal job. We've updated it twice last year and we also added a feature on there that says when it was last updated. And that was a recommendation from CPAC. We listened with CPAC and their concern was we don't know when the last time was updated. And, you know, they had a valid point, so we're able to do that. We've also routinely presented CPAC with some updates throughout the course of the year. And then in addition to that, we added some hyperlinks to the dashboard. And as we grow as a department and create more reports and more ways to make this audit successful, we'll continue to update it and provide routine updates. Any questions in reference to any of the recommendations or the dashboard or what we've done so far?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Gregory and then Councilman Gregory.
It's not really a question, but I guess it's more of a request. And, and I do know that we have the dashboard for us to track incidents, et cetera. But is there a way for you to report to at least the Public Safety Committee? The reduction in stops with regard that might be racially motivated? And why, why I'm saying this is because I'm sure that you've gotten the note from Cajun, which alleges that there are still some issues that remain that needs to be addressed. which alleges that there are still some issues that remain that needs to be addressed. Some of which I think are legitimate questions. I don't know whether or not they have any substance is what I, my issue is. So at some point, I'd like for the Public Safety Committee to sort of give us a report on change. Okay, because that's not what I've heard yet. I've heard that we've done the recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. But have, have we had any changes based upon the allegations which caused us to do the report? Which for me is a better way for all of us to see whether or not there in fact has been change.
I I ask that specific question, not as to the stop part.
Councilmember Shade, can we let Captain Cortella respond to Councilmember Gregory first and then I'll call on you. Actually, Councilmember Bowden was next. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in reference to your question, it's a great question to have. There were some disparities and we finally got to the point now where we worked for the last three years to make all of our data essentially talk to one component. Prior to this, we had the data available, but you had to take each individual report and layer it on top of one another. And it was not feasible to do. So within the last month, we were able to link all the data together. And now that we have this data, we are going to work on training for our officers. We just went through GO twenty-nine, which is our constitutional issues and motor vehicle stops policy. That has been through our command review process internally. We'll be presenting that to our department within the next weeks, get them fully trained on that. And then hopefully, within the next two to three months, we will have a report to Public Safety Committee on what the data was prior to that and to see if anything has changed within those forty-five to sixty days on we, on when we present that material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, Captain Cortella, I'm gonna press you a little bit on this and I hate. I never want to ambush staff. You guys work hard. You're here late. And so I passed along some of these questions earlier. So I'd, I'd like to know, I mean, this, the racial bias audit is getting pretty dated now. I mean, this is completely years ago. What's the most recent data showing on racial, on racial disparities, specifically motor vehicle stops, use of force incidents and decisions to search once the stop's been made?
Captain, could you hear that question?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So in response to that, as I just stated, all of our data sets just literally linked up earlier this year. So we finally had these reports and were able to do that. And like I said, it's taken us a while. As you know, in government, some things take longer than normal. And one of the big key assets was for us to get a checkmark on our uniform traffic citations, which is unique. So we were able to track this data. And one might think, well, how hard could it be? But it's a state owned system and it's only applicable to the city of Charleston throughout the whole state of South Carolina. So that almost took a year, two, a year and a half to essentially get that to the point where we are now. And we are finally having the data come. So like I said, it literally just came through probably around the first of this year that the systems are able to talk to one another. So now that we have that information available, we have to digest it. We have to see if there are any disparities and to just check with our policies and see what our objectives are. And like I said, hopefully forty-five to sixty, sixty days from now, that we can provide a report to the Public Safety Committee. And I would say give an overall depiction of where we are and where we want to be if there are any issues there.
All right. Okay. Well, I I would hope that we could get that specific question answered a lot faster. I mean, this entire racial bias audit report criticized the data keeping. And and I appreciate the qualitative answer there. That's, that's great information for all of us. Certainly something I can take back and explain to my constituents. But I want to hear numbers. I want to hear, I want to hear quantitative data that tells us whether we are continuing to see these, these disparities after the work that's been done so far. Without that data, we're, we're flying completely blind with all due respect. And and so I'm a little, little disappointed that we can't have that answer tonight. Want to move on a little bit. What do y'all feel? As you mentioned partnering with a university, was, was that the, I think we authorized some money to continue a partnership with USC a couple of weeks ago. Is, I guess, are we going to see some information coming out of that about, about what causes disparities? And and when, when can we expect that sort of, that partnership to start bearing?
Mayor, if you will, it might be good for me to kind of wrap a little bit of context into this discussion at this point. If that's okay?
Sure. Sure, chief.
So I'm just going to kind of add context to this because there's way more to this than just numbers and disparity. And there's people in that email, Councilmember Bowden, with all due respect, that kind of are almost intimating that none of these other things matter. It's only the numbers that matter. And to me, our policies do matter. Our culture matters. Our training matters. The people that we hire matter. The how that we recruit them, the retention of our people matter. So there's a lot more to this than just the numbers. We've worked with Police Executive Research Forum, a very highly respected organization that I'm the vice president of. We work with International Association of Police, Chiefs of Police, Major City Chiefs Association. We've hosted meetings here. We've hosted meetings online. We've sent people to different conferences. We've worked with the Association, the Society of Evidence Based Policing. One of the, just one example of the five areas that this audit focused on is hiring and retention. If you look around the country, if you look around the region, if you look around the state, agencies are getting crushed. They're not able to hire. If you look at what happened in Memphis, there was failings in the hiring process. There was failings in the standards. There was failings on so many different levels. And we actually become a national model. People are coming to Charleston. We're actually going around the, the, the state and around the country to actually talk about evidence based approaches and how we hire and our retention and a whole variety of things in our training of the people that we hire and the culture that we have within our organization. We've incorporated partnerships, as you mentioned, with USC, with Clemson. We've got our procedural justice director position filled, which was an extensive search and it did take time. And I said, the day that this audit was done, it would probably take us five years to sort through the data questions and the data issues. And what I will tell you, and I'll tell everybody listening, and I, I know that I have the support of the mayor and the community, is that we are not just going to make the numbers match up. We're not going to placate people just to talk about the numbers in some check the box manner and say, okay, we'll de-police these communities to make the numbers look better. I have people pleading with me from a lot of the communities that are being impacted by shootings, violent crime, gangs, retaliation shootings and a whole variety of other things for more cops, more policing, more partnerships. And so this is a lot more than just the numbers. The numbers are absolutely very important. And I'll just say that the CNA audit is an ongoing, extensive body of work. It's adapted. We are adapting and we are creating evidence based practices and outcomes, problem solving efforts and how we police our community. And I'll get to an example, maybe a more concrete example. As Tony said, we just began getting some of this data in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and then current moving forward. And we have a portal that was started with the White House Data Initiative under President Obama and the Committee and the Council on Policing, well before I got here. A very amazing practice of sharing data and and I challenge you to find many organizations in this country that have the extensive data that we have. It's still not enough. There's still a lot more that we need to do. Disparities do exist. We're closely examining. We're asking ourselves, why, why do we police in certain areas? When are we policing in those areas? Where? Who's involved? What can be changed? We'll never abandon or de-police in those communities that need us the most. And I'll give an example with traffic. We had significant issues with our traffic division. And we were very public about some of those problems that existed and about some of the things that we've done since then to do more with traffic. And I'll tell you, I talk about the three E's. People get tired of me. He probably talked about it. Engineering, enforcement and education enforcements, but one small piece of the equation of traffic. The number one complaint in every community in our city, in every region in this country is traffic. It's a significant problem. And in our city, alcohol related fatalities were a very significant problem. And so we focused on that with our traffic division, on the areas where the highest number of fatalities, injuries and personal dam, property damage, where the quality of life complaints were and where assorted of other issues were occurring. This past year, as a result, our DUI enforcement efforts and a variety of other things have increased and the alcohol related fatalities have plummeted. The, the, the bottom chopped out, the numbers of alcohol related fatalities were significantly lower. Just last week, we talked about in our Citizens Police Advisory Council. And I have to say these things because there's been a tremendous amount of work put into this by a lot of people. And we have done a lot with this audit and we will continue to do a lot to make sure that we get to the right place. We're not there yet. But we talked about traffic stops openly and invited the whole community. We, we announced it through the media and a whole variety of other word areas of why, when and where we do traffic stops, how we do them, what to expect, what our policies are, what our trainings are, what our outcomes are. We continue to do a lot of police citizens advisory academies. I would encourage you to participate in that. Numerous other city, council members have. And we are redefining what good police work looks like. It honors and respects all. We want to reduce crime and save lives while respecting those we interact with. We're building relationships with all of our partners, with our residents, with our youth. We've created Lens, which is a five oh one C three Police Foundation, which has done a lot to help us get funds for different initiatives within the communities and building trust and outreach efforts. We continue to pivot to a better place on so many levels and numbers are important. But I will tell you, there's a lot more to this audit and the culture that we have in our police department and the outcomes that we're achieving. And it's an ongoing effort and it's real change. It's lasting change and it's focused on outcomes. And I will tell you, we want to answer those questions and we can't answer them all tonight. I share those questions. I'm very passionate about it and we continue to drill down, but it's not as simple as a lot of people want to make it. And I'll stop there.
So, did you have a follow up?
I do and I'm, and I'm actually, and I appreciate all that information. And I have been clear with anybody who was asked that CPD is second to none as far as police organizations go. I think we lead in this area. I think we lead in this region. And and I appreciate everything that you just said. Chief Reynolds, with the exception of criticizing the community members who are asking these questions as demanding de-policing. It's, it's a, it's a frustrating implication. But to me, as a, as a policymaker, I appreciate that you're changing policies and I want to know about that. But what I, what I cannot make decisions on is, is qualitative information that is completely devoid of the data. Nobody's asking to make. Nobody's asking anybody to to manipulate the numbers or try to achieve a, a particular outcome that makes us less safe, that, that make the numbers bear out a certain thing that makes us less safe. And and I want to make sure that that is being made perfectly clear. I simply want to know what the, what the data shows. Have we gone far enough? Are the policy changes working? And and I appreciate that that sounds like it's going to come and I will look, I will look out for it in forty-five to sixty days, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there. But I, I just, I just think that people in our community who pay taxes and work hard and live in our communities deserve better answers than, than what they just got.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, let me just say, anybody who has any questions, I would never criticize. I think those are great questions. I think they're questions that have come to us from day one and we're embracing those questions. And we want to get better answers and we want to get better outcomes. So I'm not criticizing anybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Sac.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a question for Captain Cortella. When will the third party assessment cover each of the four major areas in the racial bias audit? And number, that's number one. And are you going to lean on some of the community for some of those questions or forming the direction on, on moving forward? And I would say you've got a built in commission, the Heart Commission led by Jerry Harris, who's also on CPAC right here to, to help with that. So I guess my question, initial question is, when will the third party assessment cover each of those four major areas?
Thank you, Councilman. So what, what we're looking at is hopefully, like I said, by the next city council meeting, we could propose the, the contract and it'll be accepted. And what's accepted, the contract lays out everything that we're looking at. And there are aspects within the contract that they will be working with CPAC, that they will be working with the community. You know, this third party entity is not just going to come in and with closed blinds and just focus on straight CPD. You know, part of it was talking about the community oriented policing practices. So they'll be charged with going out in the community and see, you know, are we making a difference in the community? Do we have the trust within the community? So absolutely, we will be working, like I said, with CPAC and with the community as well.
And I, and I realize that, you know, this effort is Herculean in terms of like collecting data, particularly when the data was probably disparate, different sources. Was not combined in one, one central location. But why has it taken so long to, to basically begin the third party assessment? Has it been cost?
No, sir. So what we wanted to do is the third party review would come in and we wanted to bring them at the, at the very end. And that was one of the recommendations, actually the last recommendation from CNA was to have the third party review come in and actually assess each one of the recommendations, the seventy-two of them, or the seventy-one actually. And just to say, have we met the threshold? If so, good job. If we haven't met the threshold, what do we need to do to improve it? Or how do we need to maintain it? You know, what's going to be our response to ensuring that we are maintaining it and reporting it back out to the community? And it wouldn't make sense on the front end or the middle end to bring the third party review in because we want to make sure that we had enough of these recommendations fulfilled to actually give them some substance to work with.
If I may interject, Captain, have they estimated how long it would take for them, once the contract is approved to, to do this review?
They have, Mr. Mayor.
It's three months, three months, Mayor, from contract execution.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Captain. Thank you.
Did you have a follow up? Councilmember Shade.
Thank you. Then let me just circle back around to Councilmember Gregory's question, Councilmember Bowden's question, just because this was my last question that we brought up yesterday. It's, and I don't want to use the word nice, but it's important that we've complied with certain components of the, of the audit. But complying with certain components of the audit does not mean that we have completed the job because the questions that y'all asked are the critical part because this, this is an ongoing process. Maybe a daily process is to some extent are the questions you asked about stops. And and how does that compare? Because just because we've completed an audit or checked off a box in an audit doesn't mean that we are quote unquote in compliance with what the audit has recommended. The work here is never going to be really done, quite frankly. This is something that we're going to have to be reviewing on a, on a regular basis to, to self-test ourselves, to self-evaluate ourselves. I said, what the work the CPD is doing. They're committed to, to doing this. They exhibited that. But we do got to give you some numbers that you can use so you have available to make the comparisons of where we are, where we were, where we are and where we're going. And and that's really critical with any good audit, I think. In adopting the practices, there's some recommendations that do require that we have completed something. It does may not need to be further reviewed and Captain Cortella gave us some examples of that during the committee report. But there are other ongoing components of this audit that we need to be on top of on a regular basis and get back reports to make sure that we are continuing that compliance component. If that makes sense what I'm, what I'm saying. So I think the questions all raised have been very good questions. They understand those questions. And we'll come back hopefully with a report on the third party review contract, let you know where we stand with that. And then get these, this other data app running that we can answer some more of these questions. But we, we're not done. I mean, I don't, you look at and say we have ninety-eight point five percent compliance. That doesn't really mean anything except we uh, compliance, that doesn't really mean anything except we've checked off a lot of the important boxes. But it really means we got a lot more work to do further down the road.
Correct. Councilmember Waring.
Mr. Mayor, I, I actually want to thank all the dialogue that took place, uh, today. You know, we went through, I'm gonna pay a fine, one hell of a struggle just to have this audience. Um, I mean, to have the racial bias report done. And now we're to the point of actually, um, checking boxes, having hard questions and the leadership in the room to answer those questions. Frankly, there was a time when the leadership in the room tried to help stop all this from happening. We wouldn't have had this conversation because there would not have been a racial bias audit. Now, we lead, in my opinion, we lead the state in this. North Charleston took upon their, uh, racial bias audit because of what the action steps Charleston did, okay? And we all joined at the same hip. We crisscross, uh, municipal boundary lines all the time. So we have a professional police force in Charleston. We certainly want a professional police force in Mount Pleasant, uh, North Charleston, Goose Creek beyond, certainly the region we travel every day. So Councilman Bowden, I really applaud you for the, uh, challenging questions you asked. Uh, Councilman Sac, the exact same thing. This is what Councilmember, um, Gregory spoke about when he was applauding, um, the Committee on Racial Equity and Inclusion when he said, I'm paraphrasing, white folk have to change. There were times those questions that you asked would have never been asked, Councilman Bowden, and the same thing with you, Councilman Sac. And we can all, we all get better as a result of that dialogue that took place. If the answers aren't readily available, we have a professional police force that's going to do the research. And I have full faith and confidence, they can report back, uh, numbers and the numbers will be honest numbers. And that's all we want. If the numbers are good, we want to hear those. If those numbers are negative, we want to hear them as well because we have the people to, to put, take the corrective action in, in place. Um, because of Cajun, Cajun brought something called pretext stops to this council. I think in a five-year periods, the city of Charleston, the previous five-year period, it had over a hundred and thirty thousand pretext stops. And in the black community, that's referred to as driving while black. You actually get stopped. Uh, no probable cause, you get pulled over. Uh, and by the way, that's not just something in Charleston, that's something that's known from one end of this country to the other, in particular among African Americans. Our chief has told us that we don't police like that anymore. Uh, but when I asked the, frankly, the pre, the previous police chief, uh, that we got no answer. He didn't want the question. And sixty-seven percent of those hundred and thirty-one thousand pretext stops were African Americans and we represent, at that time, twenty-five percent of the population. A hundred and thirty-one thousand pretext stops. Sixty-seven percent were African American, which represents about twenty-five percent of the population. That's what our police force was doing. We don't do that anymore. Now, there's some more questions and challenging, uh, changes that we need to make, but we are all in this together. I've never felt like that before, that we were in it together, but we are in this together. And on the other side, we're all going to be better results. So I, I don't want anybody to walk out here tonight thinking, uh, uh, Councilman Bowden in the plot of what he did, uh, the challenging questions that he did, or Sac, or Gregory. We're all in this together. When I saw what happened in Memphis the other day, I actually had a conversation with, um, Councilman, uh, I mean Councilman, Chief Reynolds. When I saw that, you couldn't tell me that those guys hadn't done that before. That certainly goes beyond color. But I immediately thought, what percentage of that police force? Now, those guys who did were also college graduates. But I wondered what the percentage of the police force in Memphis has college degrees versus our college degree. I grew up in this town that, uh, there was a time we had a bully police force. That's a fact. In Charleston, we had a bully police force. We have a professional police force today and we take pride in that. So, um, the good hard questions is asked in the public forum. And I believe our professionals respond. And I thank our council members for, um, doing good work of being good council people for the people you represent. Thank you.
So, um, thank you all. If I may just add a comment or two. I don't think there's a better example of the expression that this is a journey and not a destination. And when Captain Kretella reports that we've checked these boxes off, one thing that he explained to us that over thirty of those recommendations are clearly recognized as annual recurring, um, topics, so to speak, that need the numbers every year and the review for continued improvement. And even with the, uh, uh, independent, uh, uh, review of, of the audit recommendations, we already recognize that this is an ongoing thing. And Councilmember Bowden, I share your frustration that it's taken so long to get the data synced to where we're talking with the state and all like that. It, I mean, it's almost unfathomable why that would take so long. It did. So we're now in a good spot. We finally sync in the information. We're going to be back to Public Safety Committee and to this council. Um, those kinds of numbers and review of, of all those different topics, not just traffic stops, but, uh, show use of force, et cetera, that we need to, to know those numbers and the specifics in order to, uh, shape future policy. And that along with the review that we'll hopefully approve, uh, at our next meeting, that they just reported will take another three or four months. Um, I think you're really going to see it come, come together. That doesn't mean that's the end of it. It just means we, we keep another step down this, this, uh, journey and this process. So, um, I, I thank y'alls for your questions and attentiveness and chief and, and captain. Thank y'all for the report. Uh, more to come. Uh, Councilmember Shade, did you have any other report?
Well, I'd want to finish up the report, but I just want to, uh, add to what Councilmember Waring said. I wish I could tell you, Councilmember Waring, that pretextual stops are stopping, but they still very much are existing and are not within the city of Charleston Police Department, but in our community, it's, um, I deal with it on a regular basis. Councilwoman Bowden deals with it on a regular basis. And it's, it's, it undermines public trust and integrity when those things still occur. I, I wish I could tell you someday that will end, but I just don't see that on the horizon anytime soon. And it's, it's ongoing task that we have to do, but I, I do applaud our police department, our chief and their, and their leadership. They, you're right. They are listening. They're, they're responding to the questions. We've, we've, but we've got a lot more work to do and I think that, um, we'll be back with more information and answers. And, um, as long as I'm on this council, rather than this administration, we will keep on pushing those responses. We did, uh, I, I think we talked about the, um, school resource officers, two, two other discussion items that we had. We wanted to, uh, just highlight that, um, uh, the, uh, salute to the Blue Banquet, Councilmember Shealy, myself, Councilmember Pell, attended that with the mayor, of course.
And Councilmember Parker.
And Councilmember Parker, in fact, you came a little late, but we, uh, we didn't see you till later on and I, we didn't, we didn't see you till later on. So we, I think we were, we were up front in, in, in the room, but four of us were there. It was a wonderful evening. It highlighted the, um, accomplishments of several of our, um, Charleston Police Department officers and civilian employees. Uh, uh, we want to tip our hat to Ben Navarro, um, and to his group. They funded this banquet, which was a first-class event. And it was just a wonderful to be able to sit with some of these officers and, um, interact with them. Councilmember Pell and I sat next to the animal control officer. Uh, I would, she wrestles alligators, so I would not wrestle with her at all. So, um, it was all really, really quite impressive and I just wanted to highlight that. Um, the second item, and you touched upon this, Councilman Waring, a little bit already about the, uh, Memphis Police Department. Uh, just a sickening, sickening event, sequence of events. But, uh, the mayor and I were in communication with Chief Reynolds, uh, when that video was released. We were prepared in the event that there was a riot. Um, I think there were twenty folks who showed up at Marion Square either Friday or Saturday night. Um, but, uh, we were prepared in the event that there was something necessary for us to respond to in case of a riot. But we did talk a little bit more about the, um, what happened at, in Memphis and it goes back to the lack of training, the lack of supervision, allowing these fellows, and you're right, Councilman Waring, this is, was not their first rodeo on doing something like that. You could tell by their reaction to it and then they were even publicizing and sharing videos of Mr. Nichols as he was laying in the, in the street, literally dying from his, from his wounds at evening. So, um, we, we questioned the, the lack of humanity when we see a fellow human being doing something as terrible to another human being and where they're, when they're wearing a uniform and wearing a badge, it just adds to this whole level of where are we in, in this country? Where are we in this world? When we see how people just, just disrespect humanity. And it was an awful event. Hopefully that, um, the city of Memphis reacted to it quickly and suspended those officers, arrested them, charged them. Um, and we can hopefully, uh, hopefully learn more and become better citizens of our community, um, because of incidents like that. That's our report, Mayor. We got to pass, um, the request for the school resources application and the amendment to the, um, noise ordinance. I still move.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to, the SRO grant, this, I, I am so excited to see this. I, I didn't make the public safety meeting, but, um, this is something that myself and county council members have received requests for on James Island. And I, so I learned, I had to dive in and, and learn a lot about SROs and SSRTs. And it's wonderful what our police department does to step in when the county, the sheriff's office and, and or the school board can't fund a full-time SRO at schools. Um, so this is really exciting. I guess my question is just, is three all that we can ask for?
No, this was just a grant to fund for those three schools and it was Bemidji, James Simmons and Charleston Math and Science. But we do have SROs in other schools throughout that are in the jurisdiction of the city, which includes Brooklyn County as well, um, and throughout the other city schools. And I think we've had them. No, we don't have them in the, um, public schools, I mean private schools, I don't think, but we do have the other, or the other police officers who are rapid response officers in, in case of an event at a school. Those are the difference between the SROs and the STROs.
Right. So that's, that's sort of my question because we don't have, we have some schools that don't have a full-time SRO. So the SSRTs from CPD fill in, but a lot of times they travel to other schools. So this may be, if chief's still on the phone, um, maybe he can, you know, I'm just curious if, if this.
Yeah, I, I think your question, your question is good and council member, and, and, um, thank goodness, we, we live here where people want the police in the schools and, I mean, there's other places around the country, they're getting rid of their SROs and all kinds of crazy stuff. And, and the requests I get here is every school wants one. And we have fifty-two, uh, approximately fifty-two schools and we can't put an SRO in every school. So could we have asked for more grants? Yeah. But the question is, can we actually put a, a cap in every elementary school and, and all the different charter schools? And that's why we have the SSRT to find that right balance. And the answer is, um, we could have put in for more. We always can, I think, put in for more. They're always wanting more. And we had to find the right balance with what we have with traffic issues and violent crime and just being out in all of our communities and special events, et cetera, et cetera. And so we feel like we found the right balance. We look at it every year and this was a tweak to add another one at Charleston Math and Science. And, and that's where, um, we were able to expand it a little bit. And, and we continue to meet with the principals and you're right, they all want an SRO. I mean, they, 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 they would do anything to have a full-time SRO in every school in the county and every school in the city. And we just frankly can't do that. And that's a debate that comes up every year and it's a good one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And yes, I mean, the schools, the SROs and SSRTs, I mean, the, the kids, the schools love them. So thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Sac.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's my understanding that the school district does contribute to, to the, the funding for the SROs, right? So it's a match of some sort between the city and the school district?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chief, what's the total number of SROs that we have, both individual and schools and the teams?
You know, I, I actually couldn't even tell you with SSRT and all of our SROs, we have all the high schools covered, our bigger high schools. We have a couple of different SROs, all of our middle schools, um, and, and, uh, some elementary schools plus SSRT.
So it's dozens, but it's the, these three were just a supplement to, um, a pretty good sized staff that we have. All right. Any other questions, uh, need to call the question so we can approve that ordinance on number one? Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. We have a no? Okay. And, um, so next up is our Committee on Public Works, uh, Councilmember Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. All the actionable items on public works, uh, were passed unanimously. And I moved the adoption of those items.
Exactly. All right. Any discussion of questions?
Well, I have two things I want to talk about. I just want to get the actionable items passed.
Okay. Um, and which items were those again, Councilmember?
Oh, well, all the actionable items on the agenda that require funding, obviously, the, uh, three, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay. Terrific. All in, uh, any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Now for further explanation.
Well, thank you. We had a number of discussions. One, um, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Fulton to get with Councilman Shealy afterwards. And the, uh, again, for the sake of time, which dealt with Glenn McConnell and a pipe going underneath. I know, I don't know if you had a chance to get together on that. But what I want to highlight was the discussion regarding procurement thresholds. And this, in this city, we had been at forty thousand, thirty, forty thousand for, I don't know, twenty years. And again, back to the same meeting that I want to give credit where credit is due, that Councilwoman Parker pulled with our Sustainability Committee on some of the smaller projects. Hopefully being able to, uh, move through faster and more efficiently. As a result of that discussion, the, I, the, uh, the problem arose again, which is, it arose several times about, um, why projects slow down so much, in particular smaller projects. But the piece about increasing that threshold from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, but for that meeting wouldn't be on this agenda today. Or but for that meeting would not have made it to our ad hoc, uh, budget meeting. So, uh, it, our staff is supposed to come back with an ordinance to increase the threshold from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, which will enable some of the smaller projects to get through, uh, a lot faster. So, um, Councilmember Bowden, you did a good job the last time. Uh, Council Lady Parker did a good, good job this time, which moved an item that for years, we all knew we needed to do it, but now it's taking an action step. So I wanted to give credit there. Um, beyond that, any, uh, items on the report you all would like me to touch on that, Councilmember Shade?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Councilmember. Um, we, we did bring out, um, I did want to talk a little bit about Lake Sandhurst. We did talk about that yesterday in our committee, just for the, uh, council's, uh, information. In my district in Sandhurst neighborhood, which is off, um, Sam Rittenberg Boulevard and Orange Grove Road, there is a lake, um, that was created when the neighborhood was established back in the nineteen sixties. There are about thirty homes that are surrounded by this lake. Uh, it was not just a retention pond lake, it was a lake that was deep. Um, people swam in it, people boated in it, uh, has a beautiful view from the backyards of many of these houses. But there are straw mortar drains that spill into the, into this lake and has soaked up. There's, I've been in contact with Mr. Fountain about it and our legal department about it. Uh, there may be some issues dealing with the condition of the lake right now and the city's responsibility as to maybe some maintenance that has to go along with it. I just wanted to bring that up for information at this. I just wanted to bring that up for information at this point. Um, I met with the, the folks, they had their own association dealing with this um, problem. And I met with them in, uh, last month and hopefully we'll get some more answers and directing on how to help them with that, those problems. Just for information purposes only.
Right. Councilmember, uh, Shealy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, and I know Mr. Fountain's going to talk to me afterward. I just want to ask the que, I want to thank uh, Councilman Bowden for his uh, questions that he asked there as well, but um, in committee. But I know at one time we were capping these pipes to keep us to, because there were going to be requirements and regulations and some approvals needed. Are these different, are these different um, requirements? In the reason we have to split this, or did we just decide not to cap them?
I, I think that requirement remains. It's just a matter of the timing of the permitting. It's a lot longer than um, the county project is running on. We won't have our permitting in time.
Okay. So the permitting didn't have anything to do with not capping them?
That's correct.
Them, it still, we still have the same.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Of all, Councilmember Parker, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Chairman. So I, I think I might have been a little late to that, signing onto that one. I'm not on the committee, but um, I'm environmental services update. Just curious about staffing. How's it looking?
Thank you. Thank you for that question because it was one of the shortest reports we'd had all year. Everything's working fine. They own time on everything and we complimented uh, uh, Mr. Altop and, and Mr. O'Brien on that. Because you know, that's been a topic for so much of the previous year and coming into this year, but they have really hustled and hired and gotten on time picking up our trash. And I can say this uh, personal experience. Uh, I can hear the trash truck in my house on the back street. So when I hear them on the back street, I have to hustle to get my trash can. And, and normally, you know, last year I could take some time. I couldn't, I can't do that now. I have to hustle up before eight thirty, eight o'clock, eight thirty to get it out there. So they on time.
That's great. And I, I'm sorry, just, I was just curious because I know last year, I think we were, you know, we were at sixteen individuals. I mean, in our entire environmental services department.
And they have also commented that the pay raise has helped a lot, being able to hire additional people. I mean, pay raises that we fought and paid, worked in scratch and added up the calculators is making a difference uh, with new hires in, in that department in particular.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And then just the Dominion tree trimming. I know that was an issue at the last, we don't have to go too deep, but I'm just, is it? Are we open to having conversations with them?
I'm gonna let Councilmember Pell answer that. He spoke to it. He spoke to eloquently though, but yesterday.
Um, so I, I encourage you to um, check out the YouTube. There's a, there's a really um, good um, summer. There's too much to get into right now, but um, you know, Dominion has a mandate from the state, PSC, and um, they, they have to trim these trees. And, and the question comes down to the process, the coordination, the communication, things of that nature. We have a new agreement in place between the city of Charleston and Dominion. It allows for uh, more care and attention to be placed on certain specific trees. Mayor Teklenburg made a very um, uh, good request to the Dominion staff for them to maybe sp, you know, pay some special care and attention to some of the oldest neighborhoods that we've got in West Ashley and James Island that have just the best trees in, in the city. Um, no, no offense to anybody else, but when you talk about Riverland Terrace and you talk about um, Old Windermere and neighborhoods like that, you're talking about, you know, seventy, eighty-year-old um, grand trees. And I think there's an acknowledgement on Dominion's part, they're going to cooperate with us in that respect. But a big part of this is, is communication. Uh, I think it falls upon all of us on council to do what we can to help um, explain to our constituents the process. Because we all know what happens when people see these cuts. There's, there's a natural, understandable, visceral, emotional reaction to seeing mother nature um, treated that way. And it probably goes back to um, you know, uh, you know, our evolutionary past. Like when we see our environment getting handled like that. It's, it's a, we've all seen the Facebook posts and the way people react. Um, I felt that way. Um, so, so it's a process, it's a communications challenge to try to explain to constituents why Dominion is doing this. Um, you know, um, it's important. They have to do it for a service reliability perspective, a safety perspective, things of that nature. But, but it needs to be done in a measured, you know, professional um, transparent way. And the reason we had this item on the agenda um, yesterday was just to make sure all the different players in the process, Dominion, the city, council, we're all just um, clear on all the various components. So that when it's time for the contractor to have the chainsaw in their hand, going to cut a tree, that nothing is lost in communication. We have that timeout. Do we make sure we're following all the procedures? We're communicating properly and we're managing this. But, you know, um, they got to cut these trees, y'all, and, and there's going to be a lot of people um, upset about it, but we got to um, manage it. And long-term, we've got to get much more committed to getting power lines underground um, in our neighborhoods. We've improved that process. I think we still need to um, you know, make sure we're doing everything we can to uh, fund those projects, get those projects moving. Uh, because that's ultimately the solution, uh, is to take the issue off the table, you know? The Crescent in my district, Country Club Two. Um, both of those neighborhoods have done complete neighborhood-wide undergrounding projects. Wapu Heights is very close to getting underground. And then Old Windermere is moving its way up the old list. Um, so we're doing these projects. Um, but we gotta make sure that we're continuing to fund and um, make that process work as, as good as it can. And then continue to coordinate with Dominion and just really make sure that when they're going through these neighborhoods, extra care and attention is being placed so that we do what we got to do to preserve um, Dominion service reliability. We're doing what we can do to maintain safety, but at the same time, we're um, you know, protecting this beautiful natural resource that we have. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, I probably went a little longer than everyone wanted, but it's an important issue and um, we got to keep our, our eye on the ball. Thanks.
I want to say one other thing. The mayor had a, uh, as part of that conversation, the mayor had a very good idea. He asked Dominion about some of these neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods that have these seventy, eighty, hundred-year-old grand trees. Can we ask for special consideration in, in those areas? But one of the things, when the mayor brought that up, council member Pell came up with, well, maybe we can come up with just undergrounding uh, short distances. You know, you, if you got, I don't know, twenty grand oak trees on, on a particular street, undergrounding that portion and then coming back up on the other line as opposed to coming up with these V cuts. I actually think that was a very good idea, should turn into an action step. And now with, with that bill with uh, the fee income, maybe we can generate additional fee income to preserve our older neighborhoods with the grand trees, to incorporate the idea that you came up with, Mr. Mayor. So um,
We don't have to do the whole neighborhood at one time. Pick the most special spot and, and, and try to do those as smaller projects and, and preserve those trees and those neighborhoods.
I thought it was a wonderful idea. That shouldn't just die with a conversation. It should go to an action step. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember Gregory.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I understand the whys. But the results are tragic. They really are. Um, they're, they totally destroy the streetscape of neighborhoods. And trust me, I've seen after the cutting, how they grow. Okay. And, and it's, looks pretty good. Okay, over time.
Over time.
But when you do it every two years instead of every five, we never re, yes, yes. I know it's supposed to be every five years. Right. Not on Grove and Dunhaman. Sorry. Okay. Um, it's, it's been every two years. Well, at least it's been done twice, okay, in the last couple of years, I'll say.
Okay.
Um, eat, because I was about to compliment them because the trees were growing beautifully. They were looking better.
And here they come again.
Destroyed it. I mean, our neighborhood looks horrible. Grove Street, Rutledge Avenue, Dunhaman, I can go on and on. It, it it's not good. I mean, I think it even affects our property value if you want to know the truth. Because it destroys the streetscape. It's horrible. Hopefully, when spring comes and there's a little growth, I may feel better. But right now, it's horrible. I can show you, I can show you some pictures, Mayor, that you would say, wow, this tree is going to die. And they do kill a few too, as a result. Um, especially in neighborhoods where we paid to have the trees planted. Because in, 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 in our neighborhoods, we had that option. And we did a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever. But I mean, the bottom line is I understand why it's being done, but the process, Mayor, it really, really looks bad. And I agree, underground, yeah, but you've got to get everybody in the neighborhood to agree on that. I'm ready to go underground.
We can do short distances now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do my block.
Part of our new substandard. All right. Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Waring, uh, is that the end?
That's the extent of my report.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for that discussion. Next up is committee on ways and means. Any discussion on any of that, including the ways in the uh, real estate report? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is our bills up for second reading.
Move the tape one through seventeen together.
Yeah. I read, we got seventeen of them. And I think they're all as presented, so no amendments. Any um, questions or conversation about any of these? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilmember Parker?
Nay on seventeen. And just to confirm, we're on second reading, correct? Okay.
That's correct. All right. And then for third reading and ratification of one through seventeen, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. And you oppose? The ayes have it. So um, we did have one item I saw listed here as withdrawn, number nineteen. You want us to have a motion to withdraw number nineteen?
We'll be withdrawn.
All right. Now, second discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Uh, any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next, we do have um, one item up, I think, for first reading. Um, and that came out, out of our ad hoc rules committee report. So I'm going to call first on uh, Councilmember Brady.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the ad hoc rules committee met on Friday at two o'clock to kick off the uh, ruining of the Friday afternoon before going into Valentine's Day weekend. So um, but I just wanted to uh, to note on uh, what we have up for consideration tonight. Uh, so there's two things. One is uh, related to the appointments um, in terms of uh, doing a change for how appointments come through from the mayor's office. Um, I would add that that passed unanimously out of the rules committee. Um, you can see the language in here where the mayor would submit a uh, the slate for uh, his appointments to the committees as well as the chairs um, by the first meeting in December. And then the approval uh, by council would be given uh, no later than the second meeting in January, understanding um, that time of year, we have the holidays um, and that type of thing. So it effectively gives a month uh, for review. And as I said, that passed unanimously out of committee. Uh, the second portion was uh, at the request of the clerk's office, um, some cleaning up of some of the languages or language in the uh, the statute there, just moving some things around for uh, how stuff got listed on the agenda, that type of thing. Um, and that passed unanimously out of the rules committee um, as well. So uh, I do want to thank Councilmember Sacrament, Councilmember Bowden, and Councilmember Waring and the mayor for serving on uh, a committee that really dived into the minutia of uh, of our ordinances as they relate to uh, the rules of council and, and um, how we propose ordinances and everything else. So I do want to thank you guys for your service. Um, hopefully it didn't take up too much time. But I would ask that we uh, we adopt that as presented.
No question.
And I had a couple of questions. Yes. Okay. Um, the first question has to do with um, how vacancies will be filled. And I think the way it's written now is that those vacancies will be filled based upon the mayor's recommendation. And I think that the vacancies should be filled the same way we do the others. The mayor makes the recommendation, comes to council, council says yea and nay on the vacancies. That's the first thing. The second thing is on ordinances and um, how those ordinance get to uh, ratification. I think we should do the same thing across the board. In other words, when the administration, and when we say staff, we're really talking the administration. Um, when the administration um, uh, forwards an ordinance, I think that it should go through the same process. We should have two weeks, okay, just like we do for when council or other commissions submit. I think that when the administration submits, the same procedure should be applicable, unless it's an emergency of some sort. But I don't know why we're making those distinctions. An ordinance is an ordinance, okay? Be it from the administration, from this body or other commissions, I think all should be handled exactly the same unless there's an emergency. Give us two weeks. One of the biggest complaints, especially Councilman, um, uh, Lewis, one of the biggest complaints that we always had was we would come in and there's an ordinance on our desk that we have not even reviewed, that needed to be voted on. In order for us to safeguard against that, give us two weeks on any ordinance that comes before this body unless it's an emergency. Why are we making the rules different for the legislative branch? Than we are for the administrative branch or the executive branch of government? It should be the same across the board, unless it's an emergency ordinance that we've got to get done. Why not give us two weeks on all of them? Is my recommendation for changes to the ordinance, to amendments to the ordinance. One, vacancies, you go through the same process. Two, all ordinances, be it from, from the legislative branch or the executive branch, should go through the same process. Is an amendment I would like to add, unless I'm reviewing it incorrectly. Because right.
Sorry. This was just point of order. Um, didn't we, we voted on the um,
No.
Adoption of ordinances. Um, that was number seventeen?
We can revisit it.
Yeah. Well, I should do that one because I did raise it at the last council meeting. And my question was, where was the information regarding the submission of ordinance? I think I did. And I, and I, it was my understanding that it'd be done now. So maybe I misunderstood some things. But I definitely, you know, even, even if I did and we've already voted on it, I'd like to offer an amendment. At some. I, I, I just, I just think that the legislative branch, okay, the policymaking branch, okay? If we're going to spend two weeks, okay, committee, then to the bodies as a whole, the same thing should happen when the executive branch is pushing ordinance through. This, this does not apply to the executive branch. If I'm, am I correct? In terms of the process for getting an ordinance to third, first, second, third reading.
Okay. So if it's coming directly out of committee, how it's written right now, is there's a two-week cooling off period if it's coming directly out of committee? Um, if a legislator or a council member wants to introduce legislation, it starts with council communication. it starts with council communications. Council directs staff to draft, then it goes to the next standing committee. And then committee will send it back to council for consideration. So the two-week is on, the two-week cooling off period is just if it's coming directly out of committee without a council member bringing it to the floor first.
Okay, but if it comes from staff. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Of which to me is the executive branch.
Okay.
We can call it staff, but it's still the executive branch. Okay, how does that process work based upon how it's currently there? It doesn't have to go through all of it.
Well, technically. I mean, if it's coming from staff, it would start at a committee level, technically. And then committee would present it to council. Council would either give it a first reading at that presentation, or they could push it for more review by committee. I've seen that happen before.
Or it could come directly to this body without going through a committee.
It could come directly to this body for first reading.
The body to hold and makes the decision. All I'm saying is, let's make sure all of them go through the exact same process.
Understood.
That's all.
Appreciate that suggestion. Councilmember Shade and then Greg.
I, I just want to change the conversation on another topic, uh, Mr. Chairman. The under section two point five.
Well, they. I apologize. Could, could I call on councilmember Shealy first? I had recognized him prior and skipped over.
Um, I, I agree with Councilman Gregory on something. The way this is written right now, in the case of a vacancy in any committee or in the chair personship of any committee from any cause during the mayor's term of office, he shall fill such vacancy. I mean, I, 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 I agree that I think that this should go through the same process when, when we're, especially if we're looking at a new chairperson. Um, if it's not going to be the vice chairperson that takes that, which almost seems to make sense, that I think that the committee should, or, or the full council should agree on that replacement, so.
All right, so let's keep our conversation right now on the motion that's on the floor.
Right.
Which has to do, um, with the, um, appointment, committee appointments, and, and this point is relevant. Um, okay, councilmember Shade.
Well, if we're going to just focus on two point four nine, I'll, I'll defer to be go to the, the, the next topic of discussion.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Gray. Councilmember Pell.
Um. So, I'm not a big fan of the changes that we're making to two dash forty-nine. I, I, I think that the mayor, um, as the executive and the head of council, under our strong mayor form of government, uh, he is akin to the Speaker of the House under our system that we've had for generations. I mean, that's just a fact. Um, and so this is unprecedented. Um, there's not a single, um, municipality or county in the region that does this. Uh, the town of Mount Pleasant that has a weak mayor form of government, the only power the weak mayor has is to appoint committee chairs and committees. This is a, um, radical departure from our, um, precedent. It's a anti-conservative measure. We're just changing the form of government due to, um, a circumstance that, that happened with councilmen seeking and the transportation chairmanship, which has now corrected itself. I just, I think it's a knee-jerk reaction. I think it's a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. And I think it's going to cause, um, extremely counterproductive, log-rolling battles on council, factionism, pitting members of council against one another. Because what's going to happen when somebody, uh, when the mayor proposes somebody to, to, to chair a committee, when there's a, when there's a sense on council that there's a problem with that? You're going to have people pressing their green button and saying, and taking positions publicly why that person shouldn't be on this committee or should be on that committee. This is what's going to happen next year if we, if we adopt this. So I think this is, um, you know, not something we ought to do. It's unprecedented. It's, um, uh, you know, in my view, in, in search of, um, a solution to, to a problem that doesn't really exist. So, so I'm not inclined to support this. I, I would suggest that perhaps as a way we could make this a little bit better is we allow the mayor to appoint the members of the committee and we just have the chairs up for consideration. Because if every single position on every single committee is just going to be thrown onto the floor of council, how is it going to actually work at this first meeting in January? People are going to make motions from the floor to take themselves off of committees they don't want to be on? People are going to make motions on the floor saying somebody, uh, across the, 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 the table doesn't deserve to be on X committee because of this reason, that reason, and the other reason? Let's at least minimize the damage here by just focusing on the chairs of each of the committees. I think the mayor has an important role in, in this city structure that we've had in place for decades to, uh, establish a committee structure that can help, help execute, um, an agenda. And I think there ought to be really good reason for the mayor's, um, decisions to be subverted. And so to that, to that level, I think there should be a super majority requirement, a two-thirds vote requirement to, uh, usurp, uh, one of the mayor's selections, um, as committee chair. Because otherwise, I think we are just going to have, um, unbelievably counterproductive, uh, battles on the floor. And I just don't think it's, um, a good policy. Uh, and I, and I just think that, um, you know, we ought to, uh, be a little bit more, um, circumspect before we make such a radical change to existing structure. And when I say radical, I mean, there's nobody in the region that does this. And I challenge supporters of this legislation to, uh, point to examples, uh, that, that, uh, are contrary to that position that I have. And I'll, and I'll just close by saying again, the weak mayor for the town of Mount Pleasant, the weak mayor, the weak mayor. His only power that distinguishes himself from other council members is the ability to appoint committee chairs and committee appointments. So we're taking that power away from the executive in our strong mayor form of government. And I don't think it's good for this administration, for a future mayor, and mayors beyond that. I think we're rushing into this. This is an, if you vote for this, you are taking a radical, anti-conservative position with respect to the structure of government. When, when the Supreme Court makes a decision that people don't like, and people toss out the idea, let's, let's expand the court. What is the reason why that is, um, considered not a prudent decision? It's because we're, we're changing the structure of government because we don't like the results that a certain decision, um, certain decisions were made, uh, under the existing framework. I, I just think it's, uh, not a good idea, and I think we ought to, um, uh, reject this or at the very least put some more detail and structure into this so that we're only talking about committee chairs and we, um, in, include a super majority vote so that we at least give council some, some, um, pause before, um, you know, trying to, um, reverse, uh, proposals that are set for, um, by the executive. So with that, I'll rest.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Waring and then Mitchell.
Okay. Look, you had your hand up. Let me go ahead.
No, I, I don't have too much to say about it. Whatever you're going to do, you're going to do. But I'm going to say that this is something that has been in effect for a hundred years. That don't mean it's correct. You know, changes are being made every day. Now, I've been here almost twenty years. Councilman Lewis was sitting here. And he was made chairman, he was the chairman of the community development. And that next year it came, they made, they made me chairman of the committee and made him co-chair. And I sat right here and I saw the, I saw what was happening. I said, Mr. Mayor. No. I said, Councilman Lewis is chair. He likes being the chair. Let him be the chair and I'll be the co-chair and I'll learn. And we did it right here on council floor and we went right here on council floor. And that's the way we did it. We made that change right there. Everything is very smooth. Some people afraid of changes. And I have seen many changes since I've been here, many changes. Some of you all have, you know, like I said, you know, this is new, but I have seen the changes been here because some people do not want to change. I told you all before, when we sent someone up to the justice attorney general's office, we sent two councilmember up there, what we could do and what we can't do. And we can do a lot of things. With seven votes because seven votes was the one that give the power that they have to the mayor as it is. That was right after I came on council. And I knew every last one who was on council prior to me getting on council. And I think Mayor Tetlenberg knew Hardburg during that time because he was employee of the city. And that's who give the mayor the power. Council's the only one who can take it back. But they have to specify what they want back. That's what the attorney general said. But he said, now, let me tell you something. I don't say it's not going to be a fight. But that's, that's the only person can do it is council because council give it and council can take it away. But you have to specify what you want to be involved in when you're doing it. That's all it is. That's simple. That's it. That's the way the form of government we have by the, under home rules, mayor council form of government. That's all it is. But changes always to taking place. And we're going to sit here and let things happen. If it happened for a hundred years, that don't mean it's right. I see a lot of things that's not right. And I've been here a while. Not only on council, but in the community a while to see what's taking place and what's happening and what's going on and how people are feeling on both sides. And that's why I started to stay in the middle and try to work with everyone on both side. But we just have to look at things and it's not going to hurt anyone. I don't think it's going to be no big fight on council like some people think it is. Oh, this is going to personal the book that we don't usually, really, no, we don't have that. Some people might look back and all say they're both there on conviction because that's your conviction. You got the right to do that. That's your right. But I don't think it's going to be a big fight on council or mixed up on council because of we changed something in the ordinance or whatever the case may be. I haven't seen that happens since I've been here. So we should not instill that in people minds so we can, so that can happen. Sometimes you can still in people minds so we can put that on table that it could happen. That's not the way I do things. I don't do it that way. I sit here and listen. Sometime you'll see me sit here, Mr. Mayor, and don't see one mumbling word. And just listen. I listen carefully, but I know how to come back if I, if I want to, but I said, hey, let it go on. You know, because time is short. None of us might be sitting in these seats. We are talking about who is going to come behind us. District have changed, people have changed. You can vote every last one of us out of here. You know? That's all I got to say. We got to stop being mindful and stop this kind of patient with me feel as personal things. I don't believe in that kind of scenario.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Waring.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to have to leave in a, in a minute anyway, but I just wanted to respond really quickly. What makes a mayor a strong mayor? Seven votes. Come on, come on. What makes the mayor a strong mayor? Seven votes. His ability to come around and get the votes for his issue. Okay, and he's pretty good at that. For the most part. Doesn't get everything he wants, but I think what makes him, makes a mayor a strong mayor is being able to get seven votes. All this other stuff's not even relevant. At least to me, okay? Get your seven votes and you got your strength. We had a mayor for forty years. He had his seven votes in his pocket most of the time. And when he didn't, he came around like he does too. Okay, and tries to convince folks to take the position. So to me, all this is just, I don't know, it's all about the mayor having the ability, okay, to get his seven votes. That's his strength. Nothing else matters. That's his strength. And that's why much of his agenda has gotten through. Because he was able to convince seven people around this table to take his position. With that, Madam Clerk, I'm going to have to pull out, okay?
Thank you. Councilmember Waring.
Thank you. The first thing I want to, you can't leave, you need to move. I said that in the microphone. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank my colleagues for their reconsideration. I want to thank, um, Chairman Brady and the mayor. Okay, uh, we had a lot of discussions on this, uh, and the part that gets me on this. We've gotten to a racial bias audit of the police department. Okay? We've had a, um, the, the a, a review of our process. We just got through thanking community, members of the community that serve on the racial committee. And now the heart. So when it comes to collegial conversations between colleagues on council, with all due respect, Councilmember Pell, I believe we can do that. We can do it. Uh, it was Councilmember Brady that came up with the suggestion of taking the, I suggested, uh, the mayor makes his suggestions first meeting in December. Councilman Brady said, you know what? I think we know, you know, I, I suggested first meeting in, uh, January. And it was his thought process. He said, no, carry it to the second meeting in January. That gives more opportunity. And this is my term, cross-pollinization between council members talking about positions with the mayor and back around again. So when we got to the end second meeting, if it takes that long to the second meeting in January, it's a quick vote. The truthful part about, there's no such thing as being the mayor and a speaker of council. There's just no such position. I mean, no way in America. Uh, the mayor is the presiding officer. That's what he is. As the chief executive officer of this city, he is the presiding officer and is to ensure orderly floor to meeting. That's the primary purpose of a presiding officer. So we won't turn into Animal House. Um. I think better about colleagues than it's going to be a, a floor fight. I just really don't believe this floor fight because we have, um, standing committees now. So you're talking about just tweaking those committees. One of the things, uh, Councilman Brady didn't touch on, but you did see in the ordinance, the number of council members on most committees went from four to five, which would enable more people to get on a committee and solve some of the issues that frankly, Councilwoman Parker brought up. The real estate committee had just about everybody from West Ashley. Uh, I didn't realize that till she brought that up. Uh, it wasn't on purpose. I think we kind of evolved into that. Um. For any councilperson to come on and think that they don't have a prayer of getting on one community, one committee or the other, that's a problem with that, that process. That process needs to be more open. Every committee in this city, that's the process that goes through. The mayor, uh, recommends, in some cases, we recommend people for planning commission to the mayor and the mayor brings it to us. We commit to the route and we vote on it. Uh, but when it comes to the standing committees that we serve on, that's the only time that's happened. Um, then we have no say. Um, that's, that's just not right. And Councilmember, um, Mitchell is right. Uh, if it's, it's been there a hundred years, that doesn't make it right. I can go through a lot of laws that were laws that, um, well, I'm sure glad they changed. All right. So, um, I think some of the, uh, uh, conversations, and I think it'll be collegial between council members on your own sustainability. I, 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 I like to, I like to get on sustainability or maybe I want to get off of sustainability. That's conversations I look forward to having with our colleagues. Um, um, Councilmember, um, Gray, uh, being an engineer, not being on the, um, public works committee. I don't think that's on purpose. I think it's an oversight. But I actually think the committee would be improved with having an engineer that's on council. They're seeing it, uh, from different angles. Um, because we get elected by sections, but we really, uh, handle collectively the whole, on the portion that subscribes to district seven and you only vote on the portion that subscribes to district eleven. We vote on entire budget for the whole thing. Uh, so it's that collective thought process that makes us better. So I want to thank, uh, again, uh, my colleagues for, um, uh, reconsidering, uh, and thinking about this. And thinking about this. Because there was a time where we weren't even gonna have this discussion on the floor. Of council. We've had the discussion and I think we're better for it. I do believe this is a better result and and you know, the I've thought about that, that the hybrid position of. Being mayor and speaker of council. There is no position. In America where. The chief executive. Heads the legislative branch. Or even the judicial branch. There's a reason it works in this democracy, that separation of government. So. You know, I always liked your passion, brother. But. I hope you would support this and I think the I hope, Mr. Chairman, I hope you had the motion on the floor. I hope the idea about being consistent through the ordinance. I didn't think about that at the meeting where replacements the mayor would recommend and then. I think that should be even easier. And as far as replacing one person, every year the mayor comes with us and we normally find out at the meeting. Who the mayor pro temp is gonna be and normally that's a unanimous vote. So picking one person, council can do that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Shade, I think, had his hand up. And I'm gonna come to Bowden and Sacron.
You know, that's like a preacher saying my homie's gonna be short. That's like when I walked in here, Councilmember Greg said, oh, we should have a relatively short meeting tonight because. I wasn't gonna comment about two point four nine, but since we brought it up. I I I agree with my colleagues on one thing that's critically important. The the system of how we are appointing members to committees is needs to be addressed. Because the points that we have, we 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 need need to take in consideration our backgrounds. You know, what is our our occupation or our profession? Where where do we live? Do we have racial balance on on these committees? Do we have special? Expertise or special concerns or something of special importance to us? Or it's because of the district that we represent? That we have concerns about where we need to be heading with these committee appointments? And for a lot of times, we're jockeying around trying to make sure those balances fit and 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 sometimes it just doesn't. And you use the example of Councilmember Waring about. Our one engineer on the on the council not being on. Public Works and Utilities. Which is a real good point, or the balance about how many folks we got from West Ashley on on real estate. So I I think I'm gonna vote against it as a stance for this reason. I think there's a way of fixing this. A little bit differently. And one is that the member of city, city council member appointment should be based on certain criteria. And that criteria should be what we have been what we've been outlining to make sure that we have a balance. I'm I'm real concerned. And that was my initial question was gonna be asked to section two point five, actually the rationale for increasing. The size of each of these committees. Because. I mean. We are over, all of us are overworked. And that means when you start adding more committee, council members to these particular committees. That means we're gonna get more appointments on these committees. And the idea of a committee. As I understand it. Is to is to be a subsection of the whole. To take in consideration that particular issue that is before that committee. Be it public works or public safety or traffic and transportation, whatever. To come and and hear the the discussion about that particular item that is before that committee. Then report that out to the committee of the whole. When you start having five members or six members. You you you're not becoming a subsection. You're becoming a. A minimum majority almost. And it is it is defeating the idea of of what we're what we're trying to do in committee. Committee is supposed to be. A reflection of. A smaller section of the committee. We're twelve members. And you start putting five and six. Then you creating almost a majority of of the council. And I think that's the wrong message of mythology of how you want to conduct government. The the mayor is the presiding officer of this. Council. And there is this crossover. That we talked about at the last committee meeting, we I mean, council meeting we had. There is this crossover between the executive and the legislative branch. It's it's an odd situation. Some councils in some cities have a president. Of council. We don't have that in this form of government. Which is separate from 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 the mayor. The mayor is, you can, whatever you wanna call it, the presiding officer, the president, the speaker, whatever term it is, but he is the presiding officer. And the presiding officer's. Responsibility is to include committee appointments. That's what the presiding officer does. You you see it in almost every organization aside from city government. That the presiding officer of any organization appoints his committee or her committee members. I I I don't, I I I see that some of the changes in here seem to be good. It seemed to be some of the changes would address some. Technical kind of issues, but when we get to section two point four nine and two point five. I just have a little bit of a heartburn with it. And your point, Councilmember Gregory, is what you said about what makes a strong mayor. It's seven. You know what makes us a weak mayor? Seven votes. As he, it's the reverse of that as well.
I know that.
And I know you know that. So I what I would like to do is. As a stance, and I'm gonna vote against it unless we make some changes to it. And I just not comfortable with. This. The way it's written, particularly the increase in the number of of committee members on on council. I think we're heading in the wrong direction with this, right?
Thank you. You know, when I. Last time this came up, I don't think I did a good enough. Job of emphasizing that. You know, this is for me, really, this is like a. Fifty-one percent no, forty-nine percent yes. I mean, if I had a few more weeks, I might change my mind again, but I do really like. Councilmember Appel's suggestion. I don't know about the. Vote threshold, but. I I think to me, this ordinance would be better if it was if it just pertained to or if. Council would be approving chairman chairmanships. That's that really seems to be where the issue came from in the first place. And then. You know. I I don't think there's a huge problem with. Sort of trading. Positions. I know that. Councilmember Greg reached out to me about potentially swapping some spots. I mean, that that all can still go on. But I just to. Sort of. Bring in the. Check that that you're suggesting without. Creating too many. New unforeseen issues. I I would, I'd like to see. Us consider the the chairmanship issue.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. I did vote yes for this out of out of our Rules Committee. But I still have some concerns around specificity and I'm not gonna try to articulate. For Councilman Appel, he does a good job of that on his own, but for me, it's specificity about the process. Certainly, we're all collegial. Certainly, the process worked with Councilman Seekings recently. I I get all that. But the issue that I. That I have is really forethought and and it's and when you look at the definition of forethought, it's two pieces. What are we currently doing? We can we can address that. Right now. This issue would not happen because we all can just. Discuss this collegially. But forethought is about the future, what could possibly be. So when we're not here, our role is legislators. And as leaders is to think about the potential for ten years from now. The lack of specificity on how we make decisions is. Is my concern. Meaning. What? How will that conversation occur when the mayor puts a slate of of of. Of folks on on a standing committee? Are we gonna have that debate in council? Are we gonna rely on our collegiality to to discuss that? Off off hours, off time? Without without the lack of process, without the lack of of clear delineation of how those discussions should happen. What is the guarantee that it could go off the rails? And what does that process look like when it does go off the rails? Again, I don't think that's gonna happen with us. But how do we know a future council in five or ten years that that's not gonna happen? With a new mayor? That that's my my issues with with the current draft. So and Councilmember, you've said this several times. We're there. We're getting there. This 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 ordinance is is almost there. I think it could made made improved to to meet some of the needs that we want and the intent we want. It's not there yet. I do think with some more tweaking, we can get there. I think Councilman Bowden, Councilman Shade have both indicated that they're. Not very supportive. But maybe we can get there with with some of that support. I'm on the fence, even though I did a vote for this out of out of out of rules, but my concerns are the same today as they were at the last meeting is specificity about how we make how we make the decisions.
Addresses matter. So. Yeah.
I I'm just.
Can call on you again anyway, if you.
Well, thank you. And and I'm just looking at this language. It says, quote, "City Council shall have the responsibility to approve such recommendation appointments. No later than the second meeting in January." I'm concerned that this is unconstitutional is written. I think that this language can bind reports to bind future councils. And and to dictate to council when it must take a certain legislative act by putting in a deadline. And trust me, I know this area of the law. Pretty well. And I think that this is requiring a vote of council and it's requiring a vote of council by a deadline. So. I'm just gonna throw this out there that aside from all the policy issues that we talked that I talked about. I I I'm not sure that this language is. Defensible. I mean, what's I mean, let me let me put it this way. What's gonna happen if there's a logjam on some of these issues? In the second meeting of January? Is is Neil gonna lock the door and 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 prevent us from leaving? Unless we vote to approve a slate? That we we we, this council composed of the human beings in this room. Cannot force a council ten years from now to take a legislative act by a deadline. And so.
We have a deadline now.
What deadline?
The first meeting in January.
Right, but it's not a legislative act. It's it's the mayor appointing the position. Okay, so. Okay, so. It's a big difference and 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 I appreciate all these talks, all this commentary about seven vote. I I I that that's an obvious statement that's true. I agree it's true. Our our predecessors vested the mayor with these authorities. The mayor is an executive and he's a legislator. Guys, that's not. Unprecedented. It's not news. It's not anything unique to Charleston. I mean, we are, to get to Councilman Sacron's point, we are upsetting an apple car structurally. On the hope and whim and prayer that everything's just gonna be great. Okay, maybe it will be great for the vast majority of the time, but I can foresee very serious. Problems, disruptions. Through this through this processes of laid out, and I'm not sure this is constitutional as written.
Councilmember Mitchell.
And colleagues. I'm not no lawyer. And I'm not looking for a lawyer to be here to tell me, tell me nothing. I just started to use the wrong words now. You know. You you know, cuz. Lot of people think that I'm just sitting here and it is and was here, living in this city. All these years. And probably dumb to the fact, I'm dumb and not knowing. That's not true. Everybody talk, oh, I'm I'm this, let's live what is not gonna be right. This is not, the law is that this is what happens, seven votes. You can go and rap all around, all around the city and talk all this stuff that be a lawyer and this is this unconstitutional and all this kind of thing. I understand all that stuff. I understand what you're saying. I got people in politics. I got Jim Crow and my family. I I got people in politics that I know. Okay? So. We got to stop it. We got to stop all this carrying on. You 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 might be attorney, I I I applaud you. You do a good job. But nobody knows it all. That's what I'm saying. Nobody knows it all. I don't even know it all. I work for high quality. I don't know it all. But. It's not gonna be them mixing up on council. I've been here almost twenty years. And changes have been made along the way since I was here. A lot of changes has been made. A lot of the ordinance was changed because of what council saw needed to be done. And I'm still here going through it. Maybe I just been here a little too long and I need to get off of here. This is what's going on, people. Change is gonna take place. We we sitting in these seats as these seats is not, don't belong to us. It belongs to the people out in the community. And I keep telling people that. And I I always tell everyone, I'm not afraid to lose an election. Because the seat is not mine. I'm just sitting here because the people put me here to represent them. I'm out here in the community. And I don't know none of my colleagues, but nobody in this sitting in these seats is out in the streets as much as I am. I wanna walk the street with two o'clock in the morning and come and be with me sometime and see what's going.
I do.
You know, I mean, in the streets, walking. I mean, out there on Staten Island, the corner where they call the drug dealers and everything else. But getting them to change their ways. I'm out there. Because my home, I grew up. In the crunches. Lot of keep, lot of lot of you all can welcome this. Did I walk in and what I had to go through to even get to this point? So it's a long way I came. But I induced that and came up with. We got kids. All of you all in here. You know, so what I'm saying to you all, the the change is gonna take place and it could be good changes, but you got to step out on faith. Step out and do what you feel is right and step out for the others. Not for you, for the personal, not for myself, but for others. This is what we gotta do and we got to keep on going. The change is gonna, it's gonna be good. Bob is here. He's a young man. He's coming up. Appel, you a young man, you coming up, but change is gonna take place and we got to go on with the change, but you might be here to make up the changes. But right now, we have to go through this, man. Let's let's go through it. Let's get it done and. So we can go home.
It is Valentine's Day. Y'all, Councilmember Greg has not been recognized and wants to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this quick. And for the record, I did not say this was gonna be a quick meeting tonight. I I am the junior member of council, as we all know. I would say that in my short time here, just about a year now, the the. The best experiences I think I've had and the best things that have come out of this council have been things that we have mulled over and. Molded together. And I don't see how this would be any different. I voted against this on the first. Was the the first time. I'm gonna vote for it now. For the reasons that you all discussed and and most of the senior members here have a lot more experience here than than I do. Regarding the point on. Binding some future council to a vote. I mean, we do that now with a budget, so I don't I don't see how that's any different, how this would be any different than a budget. Well, I I would argue that the citizens of Charleston and our our employees would say that we do. All right. Well, anyway, I I think. I I appreciate the the changes that have been made. I think it's a. And I think this will be better for us. The last thing I'm gonna say, I promise, is. We've been fortunate to have really good mayors in our tenure here in Charleston. But. We're not guaranteed that in the future. It would be a lot easier to have a bad mayor than it would be to have seven bad council members. So we've talked about, you know, the possibility of seven bad council members. All right, well, I I clearly. I I think it would be easier to have one bad mayor than it would be to have. Seven bad council members. So I will end it with that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll put a motion on the floor to defer.
Wanted to be recognized.
Well, I wanna put a motion on the floor to defer.
Second. Okay.
Motion to defer. That takes precedent.
All right.
Give us a little time to think about it.
Motion to defer. Hearing on all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Happy Valentine's Day. Hey, y'all, we're not done yet. I'm sorry. We we do have. An executive session requested on on a few items. One to receive legal advice on a lawsuit that we've. Been in with the city of North Charleston and another item to receive legal update. On a South Carolina Department of Natural Resources Community Assistance Visit and Other Building Matters. So. Can I entertain a motion that would go in executive session?
Same with.
All in favor, please say aye. If it's all right with everybody else that's here, could we just stay in place right here in council chambers and ask any staff that's not a part of?
On YouTube right now. Thank you for your patience. We just got to a point with all this, we wanted to share that information with you.
And I think we're, I think we're up.
We're up. All right. There we go. Can I entertain a motion?
Move to come out of the executive session.
Executive session. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that no action was taken while we were executive session. And is there any further business to come before us tonight? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.